Welcome. It is, what are we, January 16th? It's 5:30 PM. This is our regular city council meeting. Thank you all for joining us. May we start with a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Here.
Counselor Yazi?
Mayor Yusef?
Here.
And Counselor Bossmans?
Present.
May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Yes, hi, everyone. Hope you can hear me okay. I'm Diego Pons, here today with my colleague Liz Torres.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Testing, testing, audio.
There we go.
Okay. So, hi, everyone. Diego Pons, here today with my colleague Liz Torres, on behalf of the Community Language Cooperative. Thank you for having us at the meeting, for continuing to make this commitment towards language justice, to create the space so everyone can participate and engage in the language of their heart, the language they feel most comfortable in. We'll continue using simultaneous interpretation in both English and Spanish. After I have finished saying the instructions in both languages, we'll start the interpretation. At that moment, you'll see that globe icon that says "Interpretation" in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. I'll ask you to please select that globe icon when it appears on your screen, and to please select "Prefer Language." And if you're joining the meeting tonight on your cellphone or on your tablet, please be on the lookout for the "More" button, or the three dots button, to select "Prefer Language" this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, we'll strongly encourage you to select "Prefer Language", so you can use the interpretation. If anyone were to speak in the opposite language, and if you're bilingual, then just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. Thank you so much. Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy de parte de la cooperativa comunitaria de la justicia del lenguaje, sí o sí, con mi colega Liz Torres. Gracias por invitarnos hoy a su reunión, y por continuar comprometiéndose a servir la justicia al lenguaje, lo cual significa que queremos crear un espacio para que todos puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón, el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Ahora, cuando yo termine de decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación. Y ya cuando se activa la interpretación, usted va a poder ver ese icono de globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación ahí abajo, en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, elija ese icono de globo de la tierra cuando aparezca en su pantalla, y por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Y si usted está asistiendo hoy a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice "more", que quiere decir "más", otra vez el botón de tres puntos, para que pueda elegir su idioma preferido de esa otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar que elija su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar la interpretación cuando alguien vaya a hablar en el otro idioma. Y si usted sí es bilingüe, sienta-se libre de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Moving on to opening remarks by mayor and council. Council, any opening remarks tonight? And I don't have one either, so we will move on to city manager updates. Jose, I'm going to pass it to you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have Scott Shine, our Community Development Director, to give an update on our move from River City Hall to the former Big Picture High School building.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Shine with Community Development. I am pleased to be giving this update on behalf of Erin Hyder, Assistant City Manager. She really wanted to be here tonight, but she's currently out of the office, so I'll speak from her talking points that she helped us prepare. We are thrilled to announce that our community development and engineering teams finished moving out of River City Hall over the weekend, and we're now up and running at the Community Development and Engineering Building, formerly known as the Big Picture. So, start reconfiguring how you refer to that building. As of this morning, we're open. We're providing services to the public at 215 East 12th Street, just two blocks down from City Hall. It was a great partnership and a great cross-departmental effort. So I just wanted to take a chance to recognize several teams that were critical to the success of the project. Facilities helped out a lot. IT, obviously, things we take for granted that needed to be switched over and set up. Finance, Public Works, Parks and Rec, who's helping us with snow removal at the new space. City Attorney's Office. Obviously, the staff in Community Development and Engineering. And of course, we greatly appreciate the vision and financial support from the City Manager's Office and from City Council. Thank you for making this possible. We really do think it's going to help us provide great services to the community. We'd like to give a special thanks to our capital improvement project team, who managed the project in partnership with FCI Construction and Reynolds Ash Associates, who were the designers on the project. Specifically, we'd like to recognize and thank Jennifer Holland and Owen Talmage, who oversaw and drove the week-by-week activities. This team in the CIP Division helped us complete the project ahead of schedule and within the budget that was allocated. This is a great accomplishment and provides some strong momentum for the CIP team as they continue to tackle larger and more complex projects in 2024. So as you know, freeing up River City Hall to be redeveloped into the new fire station and creating a city presence on the former 9R site is the first step in a multifaceted undertaking that will have huge implications for the community. So it's really exciting to be a part of it, to have taken this first step. And to celebrate, we're going to host ribbon-cutting and grand opening, including an open house to walk through the space on Friday, February 9. So we'll get more information out and a placeholder for you all on that soon. So for members of the community who are looking for community development or engineering team members for services such as building permits, excavation permits, inspections, code compliance, or planning reviews, you can stop by the Community Development and Engineering Building at 215 East 12th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for your leadership and coordination of this effort. Appreciate it. All right, with that, we will move on to committee, board, and liaison reports. I'll start with councilors. Who'd like to go first?
Go real quick. I had the Chamber of Commerce meeting just this morning. We had our first meeting with our new elected members of the board, so it was good to meet some of those new folks. They all kind of discussed what was important to them, whether it was advocacy, or education, or some of those, you know, ancillary subcommittees to be a part of. So it was good to see them bet some of those things out. Jack Llewellyn, the Executive Director for the Chamber, also did a recap on the 2023 accomplishments and kind of overall, like, what the scope of the Chamber was, and helped kind of align some of those new members about what they were getting into. So I think everybody's really excited about what they're going to do over the coming year. And obviously, we always discuss relevant issues impacting local businesses, but we talked a lot about housing and what sort of legislative impacts are coming down the pipe. So yeah, always good to be a part of those conversations. We also had, I also went to the FLC's Business Economic Outlook Meeting. Jessica was also there. It's always great looking at state and regional economic impacts from the past year and what those experts believe the outlook for 2024 looks like, not only for the state of Colorado, but also for our local macroeconomy and region. It was really cool to hear speakers that talked not only on the state level and then what sort of economic impacts are going to be happening over 2024, what they foresee, but also what they are going to be, what our local economists think, you know, Dr. Peach with Fort Lewis and some other local, regional business partners and what they see over the coming year. So yeah, it was, it's always super informative to go to those, and it was really cool to be a part of those conversations also.
Um, yes, went to Southwest Economic Outlook. It was great, super interesting, well-attended. Thought it was, it's always great to get a full picture of the state, too, and how La Plata County is and Durango is doing in regards to comparing to the rest of the state. So it's super interesting. We didn't have our regular alliance meeting, the big one that everyone attends because of that, but we did have the Alliance Board meeting. We got some updates on our strategic plan. We completed our three-year strategic plan for the alliance. Talked about some investment policies. We have an investment policy, but there's a potential for some different types of investing for the alliance to do, to maybe go in line with its goals of supporting small business. And so they're going to kind of look at that a little bit. We had a housing update, which I'm sure Gilda, or maybe she talked about the last meeting, actually, where the RHA did the strategic plan. It's pretty much complete. Catalyst Fund Round Two is finalized. There's going to be three projects that are funded out of that catalyst fund. One or two preservation projects, housing projects, and one new development project. So that's great. Our, the Proposition 123 letter of interest was submitted. Yeah, I think those were like the big things. For workforce, they're doing Project Run, which is the leadership training and childcare training that they're having for our workforce. And that is, the leadership is going to be starting in May or June. And our next membership meeting is going to be on February 13th because of the economic summit. So, there you go.
Thank you. Other councilors?
It was a busy couple weeks here. So on January 10th, I attended a Zoom meeting with the Fort Lewis College Native American Alumni Association, because they reached out to me. So I gave my input on some of the things that they could be doing with the city and how they can implement some change. So that was all good. The 11th, I had the RHA meeting, which is the Regional Housing Alliance, which does work in conjunction with the Business Alliance and the Catalyst Fund. It's a fund that is primarily, what, granted by the alliance to the regional authority to help with development ideas. And that's going along well. We, we always get updates at the Regional Housing Alliance meeting on how these funds are being utilized and who applies for them. We also work with the Homes Fund project, too. And I think the work there has gone really well, because we're, we kind of had a discussion about, since we have the term Regional Housing Alliance, so what we really mean is regional that applies to La Plata County. And that was a very good, distinct discussion, because it just means La Plata County-wide. And then this morning, I had an interview with Katie U.R., so I gave them an update on how my term on city council has been. And hopefully, they'll be playing that in their spotlight interview section pretty soon. And that's about all.
Thank you, Gilda. Counselor Bossmans, do you have any? Okay. I just am going to do a report on my city council office hours, which I just held this afternoon. They were, and I think it's important to just take a few minutes to talk about kind of what I heard, since this is a key avenue that we are getting information from the public. And I had quite a few people show up today. It was a long line of residents that wanted to communicate. I spoke with a lady who is Mary Hendrick, who was, and also there was a gentleman by the name of Jim Cross there today, who wanted to speak with the city council about Lake Night Horse, their proponents of more no-wake time. They wanted to know the best way to approach this. How do we ask for more wake time? Currently, we are only open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for no-wake zones, no weekend wakeless time. And this is less wakeless time than we had when we first opened it. We used to have two full days, Mondays and Wednesdays, of no-wake time. They brought a lot of data that they shared with me, which says that 90% of the users are non-wake users. We've had a huge increase in the number of users of the lake, which is great. But they are going to be coming forward to council during public participation today, likely, requesting that council bring this up for review and discussion at a future council meeting, if there is majority council support. So I wanted to give you all the update. I heard from Sweetie Marbury, who will be speaking with us today, but she had quite several concerns that I just wanted to bring up. She's concerned about the Lake Night Horse, the pipe. She, she, she's talking about the pipe and design money set up to get water out of Lake Nice Horse. You know, she recognized that we are in a drought situation here, and water is always a concern. And she wants to know why the city is not being more proactive about getting water and a redundant water supply. So she was requesting an update on the Lake Night Horse pipeline, because it is so meaningful to our city residents. She was really requesting that we have this type of update in an open public council meeting, so we can all be apprised of the next steps. Where are we and what, you know, and what are we doing going, going forward to get, to get more water? She also asked me questions on lot sizes, on ADUs. She wanted to know again, where are we on this inequity about allowing, you know, not allowing ADUs for everyone? She's recognized that we're all talking frequently about a housing need. And in Sweetie's opinion, this is a good way to go about giving people the financial opportunity to create more housing. She brought up the 2005 reauthorization, recommending that we should be talking about it now, if we're considering this at all for the November ballot. We should be having these council discussions publicly. She, we talked again some more about the 50/50 sidewalk program. I know we had some communication about that after her presentation to council. And Jose, I wasn't sure if we might be able to follow up with Sweetie on that and to get some more information on this sidewalk program. And we had concerns, some discussions about a few other topics, but those were some of the highlights that I wanted to bring up. And Sweetie will probably speak with us again today. I heard from Rick Cobb. Rick is really concerned. He, you know, suggested that in the past, the prioritization of parks and recreation projects was done at the Parks and Recreation Board level. And he's very, he wants to have some input into the recreation of those parks and recreation projects. I recommended that he speak to the Financial Advisory Board, but he's really wanted to, going back to where, where it's starting with that prioritization of those projects. I spoke with Denise Lane and Tom DeHoodie about the La Posta Road area development. They noted that the development plan has changed dramatically since, since the onset of this project. And their concerns are, where are the parks going to go? Where is the fire station going to go? Where will a school go? They're not seeing land in the plans for these key features. If there are truly, over time, going to possibly be 1,700 homes, where are the amenities for those families with potentially children? So we're looking at high-density, medium-density housing there, but they're not seeing any land left for parks, schools, and fire stations. So I just wanted to bring that forward for our discussions when we have, you know, discussions about Lake La Posta Road. We can all keep that in the back of our mind to think about. I also spoke with Buck and Trish Peg, Buck Scully and Trish Pagim. They're really concerned about Perrin's Canyon. He's recommending that all of us take, you know, drive down Rosemary Lane and look down into the canyon. They, he noted that the, it is, the sediment basin is completely full. And he's concerned that it needs to be cleaned out. He's saying that that sediment is going to blow into the Animus River and Lightner Creek if we don't clean that sediment out before runoffs happen. So he's really worried about the quality of our water. And he really wants this to get cleaned out. I spoke with Karen, well, several different members of the Durango Minimum Wage Coalition. They will be reaching out to all of council, just to keep you guys apprised in your various city council office hours. I talked a lot about why they're approaching us, what, why it might make sense for our community, in their opinion, around affordability issues. It's, you know, we all talk about affordability issues here in Durango. We talk a lot about around housing, but they're saying if you address it from a wage perspective, it helps. They are working really hard right now on gathering more data. And they're kind of in their beginning stages of their discussions. So I told them to, once they get more data, to come back to me. One of the discussion points that they're really working on is, in the past, there's been an organization by the name of Thrive with Local First. And Thrive had, has recognized, I think, 40 different businesses who were already paying a minimum wage. So they're trying to get more recent data on that. It was, that was from 2019. So they're getting updates. And then I spoke with a few other people, but it was really busy, busy office hours today, because here we are into 2024 and projects are happening. All right, and with that, we will move on to public comment. This public comment is for comment on items we are considering in our business meeting tonight, items that fall under Section 8, 9, and 11. Item number 10 will have its own public comment. And for tonight, we have several members that would like to speak. Again, this public comment is not for items under consideration that are not on our business agenda. Those public comments will happen under item number 13. And with that, we will go ahead and start with Rita M. Host, I think? Horst? Okay, oh, item 10. Then maybe you can speak during public comment on that item directly. Okay, thank you. Area Plan Amendment. Okay, several of these are. I see that. Oh, they all are. If there is anyone that would not like to speak on an agenda item, on, that wants to speak on Agenda Item Number 8, 9, or 11, let me know. It looks like there is one. Like, you can, you can join us. Yes, if you would like to come now. And unless it's, if it's for one of those items on the agenda, which I believe yours is. Yes, please. Yep, great. That would be great. If you could speak your name, and if you're a resident of the city or not.
Yes. Good evening, councilors and audience. My name is Lisa Blumquist. I'm the Executive Director of Homes Fund, and I am a city resident as well. And I would like to thank you for your partnership and for your consideration of allocating a pass-through, basically, of CDBG funds to Homes Fund, so that we could continue our mortgage assistance program. And the, and as Eva will present later, the CDBG funds, that stands for Community Development Block Grant, those must go to a governmental entity. And the city has been our partner with, for the CDBG funds, well, since long before my time. So I really appreciate your partnership, really appreciate your support. With those CDBG loans, homeownership will be possible for low and moderate income, low and moderate income households. And since it's been a little while since I've been here, I just wanted to give you guys a couple of outcomes from, from 2023. So 2023 was a record-breaking year for Homes Fund. We deployed more than $3.5 million of mortgage assistance loans to low and moderate income home buyers. That's about double our last record-breaking year. So typically, our lending over the last couple of years has been a little bit over $1 million. So to do over $3.5 million is huge. And, and what we've had to do is stack multiple forms of, of assistance, because as, as you know certainly intuitively, and I'm happy to give you actual data on this, the gap between what people can afford and what home prices are available, and especially given high interest rates, has, has expanded and made homeownership very difficult for people. In addition, we, 307 households attended our homebuyer education class. We, we gave housing counseling to about 100 households, and that three, that $3.5 million went to 44 households that are now homeowners in southwest Colorado. So we, we are thrilled to be able to do this, and we really couldn't do it without the, without the support of our local governments, including the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to comment virtually? Not seeing, all right. Thank you. Then may we have a reading of the consent agenda, please, Ben?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under item 8.1, Approval of Meeting Minutes, we have 8.1.1, Approval of the Minutes from the January 2nd, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting. And we also have 8.1.2, Approval of Minutes from the January 9th, 2024 City Council Special Meeting. Under 8.2, Final Reading of Ordinances, there's no items. Under 8.3, Adoption of Resolutions by Consent, there are no items. Under 8.4, Approval of Other Administrative Items, there are no items. And lastly, under 8.5, Land Use and Development Action Items, there are no items.
Excellent. Thank you, Ben. Do we have any city councilor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on then to item number 10, Land Use and Development. May we have a reading of item 10.1, please?
Item 10.1 is a public hearing to consider a resolution amending the future land use map for Tree Farm Village, located north of State Highway 160, east of County Road 233, in the vicinity of Elmore's Corner.
Great, thank you. Staff presentation. Hi, Vicki.
Hi, I'm Vicki Vandergrift, planner with the City of Durango. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request from Trees Farm Village to amend the City of Durango's future land use map to designate their properties as residential low-density. It does align with the strategic plan and affordability and economic opportunity by creating housing opportunities to support multigenerational and mixed-income community workforce, and also to support the production of a variety of housing types. There are three parcels involved in this project for 81.11 acres. It will be accessed off of the, an extension of County Road 233. This is in the joint, Sutton's Joint Planning. They are requesting city water service by designating, designing and extending the water line that ends at Three Springs Boulevard. And the applicants needed to amend the city's future land use map to receive that water. This is where the site is located. It's outlined in red. Sorry. And then you can see this is Three Springs. This is the existing city limits. This is County Road 233. Elmore's Corner is right there. This is a photo of it, the site. It's pretty rural right now. It's basically vacant land. So the city has policies about how we allow water. So the city will allow the use of city water within the city service area boundaries. The proposed development must be in accordance with city's comprehensive plan. The development must meet the city's development standards, and the property must be part of the joint planning area map. So the cities, this is the city's comprehensive plan. It is also the city's water service area. So they're the same property or the same area for both. And up until 2014, this was also the joint planning area map. And you can see the property in question is the red outline right there. In 2014, the county commissioners requested the city council remove or move the boundary back or to the west from the eastern edge. And so this property is no longer, or was no longer, in joint planning, and it was back to this point where the colored lines shown up. And then here's Three Springs. So one of the things that they also asked was to expand that joint planning area with that red hatch line to be part of the city's joint planning, or city and county's joint planning area. So the process is governed by the intergovernmental agreement between the city and, the City of Durango and La Plata County. The request is heard by both planning commissions, both the city and the county meeting jointly. So you have up to 10 members at the meeting. The City Planning Commission heard the question for changing the future land use map, and they made a recommendation of denial with the three, or, sorry, with the two-to-one vote. But this process is a recommendation to the city council, and it has continued on to you for the actual decision. The county heard the second request to amend the joint planning area map, which is part of the IGA. And at the second meeting, because they continued it, they did approve that amendment. So the boundary, the planning area boundary has changed. As for the land use question, which is before you tonight, there, it, property in question currently has four different land use categories. The red at the bottom is commercial. The purple is mixed use, which has up to 24 units to the acre. The yellow, bright yellow, is residential low-density, which is up to 4.99. The yellow, bright yellow, is residential low density, which is up to 4.99 units to the acre. And then the light yellow is rural residential, which is one, maximum of one unit, one acre per unit. So the request is to amend the entire property to residential low density. So getting rid of the other uses that could be allowed, getting rid of anything that's multifamily in nature, and allow for that, what they're proposing, which is allowing a manufactured home community with approximately 310 units on it. So the criteria for comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendments are outlined in our code. One of the biggest changes that has happened, which allows for this map amendment, is changing in conditions, and that really is because they're going to extend the city water. So with water going out there, then densities can increase, and they, we, that is a, that is the criteria that makes this map amendment acceptable because the city doesn't want one-acre lots, it doesn't make sense to serve water with one-acre lots, you really want density and allow for infill and different types of housing types. There are a number of policies in, in the comprehensive plan, the Grandview Area Plan and the Housing Plan that support the growth in the Grandview area. There is a policy statement in the comprehensive plan that talks about coordinating with property owners, applicable service providers, and the county to establish standards for the expansion of urbanizing area boundary and appropriate modifications of future land uses. The Housing Plan also supports the creation of additional housing opportunities for housing and a variety of housing types. And then staff does find that the request does meet our plan, our guiding plans. We did have a neighborhood meeting on April 5th, there were a number of neighbors at that meeting. They had a lot of questions and concerns focused mostly on the potential manufactured home development itself, but that is not before you tonight. Tonight, it's, it's really just the land use is the only question that comes before the plant, the city council. The Durango City Council and La Plata County also had a public hearing, and so they also had additional comment at that meeting. That again focused a lot on the actual manufactured home development. In summary, the future land use map is a guide for the types of uses which may be appropriate. It does, the proposal is to take the density that is allowed under the current land use map and really spread it out across the map and get rid of all the multifamily that was at the lower end of that map, the southern end. The actual development proposal, as I just said, is not before you. There will be details on traffic utilities, design, compatibility, functionality, all of that will be discussed at future Joint Planning Commission meetings. And what is before you is just that question of the residential low density on the three parcels. The city planning commission did recommend denial of the future land use map amendment on a two-one vote. The city's planning commission had concerns about the ability, the city's ability to serve water and the lack of redundancy of water in the Grandview area. The city's 2022 Water Master Plan does not suggest that development should be reduced or halted, halted until redundancies are accomplished. The plan states there is adequate water at this time, redundancy will have to occur between, before 2045. Staff is still recommending approval, and we've given you a mo, motion in your pocket.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm sure we will have questions, but before that, may we get a motion from council? Could I have a motion from council? Go ahead.
I move to approve the resolution changing the Tree Farm Village properties to residential low density on the future land use map.
Second.
Great. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to go ahead and start by a presentation from the developer. I understand we have several members here, and so we're going to go ahead and allow 10 minutes for this presentation, if you'd like to join us at the podium. If you could state your name, where you're from, just the basics for us, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Brendan Sundell. I am not a resident of Durango, I'm from California. Along with my partner, Mark Coleman, we are the developers behind this project. Collectively, we have near 45, 50 years' experience of owning, operating manufactured home communities. Collectively, we have 40 communities across the United States and Canada, resulting in 10,000 spaces. I do want to point out, we are long-term holders, we do not sell, because I believe that may be an issue or cause of concern for some of the local communities that you guys have. It's pretty obvious that there is a supply shortfall of workforce and affordable housing. I think it's been the southwest Colorado Council of Governments and Housing Solutions of the southwest conclude that over 570 new affordable workforce housing units need to be developed in the next three years. The county identifies a significant need for the missing middle, those earning 80% to 120% of the AMI, and it's only getting worse. Durango has seen its median home price increased $735,000 as of December 2023, which is up 7.3% in the last 12 months, and the median home price in La Plata has reached 800,000 last month, up 19%. The current population in Durango has increased 13% in the last decade, and the population is the highest it's ever been. So this is not the silver bullet to address the housing crisis, but this is a viable solution to address the workforce housing issue in the county and the city. Tree Farm provides that solution. The proposed development is a five-star manufactured home community over the 81 acres. We will be an all-age community equipped with clubhouse, pool, basketball courts, sports fields, walking trails, barbecues, picnic, picnic pavilions in a community garden, and we're very excited about the opportunity. Manufactured homes today, we briefly wanted to touch on this because there is concern of product we are building for the community members. This is what they look like. They're not mobile homes, they're not trailers. Yes, they're built in a factory and off-site, but they're, they're shipped and then assembled onsite, and if you drive by them after the fact, you probably wouldn't know, be able to notice the difference. Here are our communities today, and these are communities we own and operate. We're nothing like what you guys have in town, and we're very proud to call them our own. So why manufactured homes? The target price for a 1,620-square-foot home are approximately 70% less expensive than the median home price in Durango, $225,000 versus your $735,000. The median five-year appreciation for a manufactured home in Colorado increased 75%. This is the fifth fastest out of any state in the country. So there is the opportunity for people to come in, entry-level homes, and earn equity and appreciation. And the difference in price between a manufactured home and a site-built home is nearly $535,000, making it the largest price discrepancies in the US, only behind California and Massachusetts. So here are some numbers, so you can see. Our target price for a manufactured home is $225,000. As a result, this will cost approximately $2,000 less per month to live in Tree Farm than it would in a site-built home in Durango, Colorado. To purchase a home in Tree Farm, a would-be homebuyer could put down as little as $17,000 versus $147,000 required for a site-built home in Durango, Colorado. As of 2023, the average price per square foot for a site-built home in Durango is $527, bucks. The price per square foot for a 1,620-square-foot home in Tree Farm is $139. Sales price of manufactured home in Tree Farm would be as low as 1.8 times the median Durango household income compared to the 7.75 times median Durango household income for a site-built home in Durango. So here are some highlights. Rent control. Tree Farm Village would be the first manufactured home community in the state of Colorado with self-imposed rent control. We are committed to developing workforce housing, and as a result, have already proposed to the City of Durango that in turn, for their support of this project, we will agree to have self-imposed rent control. The details of those are still being worked out, we have sent a few proposals to the planning staff, and I'm sure that will happen later on. Compatibility, because I know this will be an issue. The proposed amendment is lowering the density on the site, it's lowering the density. Currently, the 82 acres is a combination of residential large lot, low-density residential, mixed use and commercial, allowing up to 8.35 units to the acre, or 666 units. Our proposal, the amendment, is requesting that the future landlords' use on the entire 82 acres be low-density residential, which will allow 3.99 units to the acre. Traffic, because I know this is another issue. Tree Farm will have an average daily traffic of 757, 756 trips per day, with an AM peak at 133 trips, and a PM peak of 179 trips, which is approximately three cars per minute. Preliminary calculations reveal there will not be a need to install a traffic signal. Water. Tree Farm will fund and extend city water along CR 233, giving 35 properties direct access to city water with the ability to tap into the water line at their discretion. Again, we will fund the water line out to the property. And lastly, the CR 233 road extension, which has been a discussion, I believe, the county level for quite some time. Tree Farm will fund and extend a portion of the County Road 233 to accommodate egress and ingress requirements to our project. Here's our site plan, just so you can see. Site plan conforms to the new 400-foot oil radius that recently took effect. As you can see, the existing land use for residential large lot, large lot, commercial, residential low density, and mixed use. We, like Vicky mentioned, we are requesting low-density residential. In the City of Durango Water Master Plan, we briefly wanted to touch on this because this is what the city planning commission, on August 17th, rejected our application after incorrectly interpreting the city's water master plan because members of the planning commission believe there was insufficient water and a lack of water line redundancy to the site. The Durango Water Master Plan was developed in 2021, anticipating growth to the city's service boundary and future increases in density. The water master plan ultimately calls for additional pipe or redundancy, but the plan specifically states that this additional pipe is needed in the midterm. But what does midterm mean? Midterm means, and as described in the plan, the year 2045, or when the Durango system grows to 15 million gallons per day, whichever comes sooner. The city currently delivers a maximum of 10 million gallons a day. So to reach this 15 million gallons a day, the City of Durango will need to increase its usage population by nearly 50%. Tree Farm will approximately use, use approximately 315 gallons, 350 gallons a day per unit, or an overall usage of .11 MGD. So if you take the Tree Farm's projected usage plus the city's current usage, we're going to get 10.11, 10.11 million gallons today, for the day, which is nowhere near the 15 required for the additional redundancy. So to state, as the city planning commission did in its recommendation to the city council, that a city presently has insufficient water or water line redundancy, redundancy is simply not accurate. And I think that's all we have, unless Paul you wanted to touch more on. And if there's any further questions on water or concern, we have Paul O'Neill here, who wrote the, the water master plan that the city has adopted. That's all I have. Thank you for your time, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, we might have questions, but we're going to wait until per-council discussion. Appreciate that. We're going to have a public comment now. I have a list of those who signed up, and there might be other residents who joined later, and if you'd like to speak at the end, I'll call on you. But now we'll start with Rita M. Host, I believe, I'm sorry, yes. If you could join us at the podium, state your name and whether you're a resident of the city. We're limiting public comment here to three minutes, and I will be watching the clock because we have quite a few people who'd like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Rita Horst, I'm a, I've been a resident of Durango since the 80s, and both of my children were born here, raised here, and as a single mom, I struggled to find affordable housing the whole time. Now my children are grown, and I find myself in, in an interesting position of being, being the recruiter and retainer of employees. I have, apparently, I, I'm the director, community director of Sunshine Gardens, and I, I struggle with finding, with keeping employees skilled, qualified employees, because many of them have to drive in from out of state. And I want to encourage you all to consider this type of a project. This project is, is wonderful and will help us to keep Durango this rich, diverse, and inclusive community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Pat Vaughn. And if you could direct your comments to council, please, and speak clearly into the microphone so we can get you good on recording. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Excuse me, my name is Patrick Vaughn, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Regional Housing Alliance for one, but also personally, secondly. So I'm the chairman of the Regional Housing Alliance, and the Regional Housing Alliance did offer a letter of support for this project, and I'd like to read that letter real quick. It says, "The Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County, RHA, is in support of the proposed manufactured home development Tree Farm Village in La Plata County, Colorado, which by virtue of the developer's commitment shall include rent control. As an authority dedicated to promoting affordable housing in sustainable communities, we believe that Tree Farm Village aligns with our mission and will benefit the region. The RHA is a multi-jurisdictional agency created in 2004 by an intergovernmental agreement between La Plata County, the City of Durango, Town of Bayfield, and Town of Ignacio. Please note that all RHA board members with a potential conflict regarding this land use proposal recuse themselves from weighing in on this recommendation. This includes director, directors Porter Norton, Hall, Henson, Yazi, and Craig. Thus, the balance of the board, although not representing a majority of the full board, voted in favor of writing a letter of support. The RHA's mission is to facilitate and support the preservation, rehabilitation, and development of appropriate, affordable, attainable housing for the workforce essential to the long-term economic sustainability and resiliency of La Plata County and its communities. Tree Farm Village addresses the critical need to create housing inventory and product diversification in Durango and La Plata County. The market-driven approach of Tree Farm Village, offering housing as, excuse me, housing at reasonable rates, is commendable and a step towards addressing the region's need for affordable housing. We commend Tree Farm Village for its self-imposed rent control, demonstrating a genuine concern for the community's well-being. In the area of es, era of escalating housing costs, their commitment to maintaining reasonable rental rates sets a positive example and reinforces their dedication to long-term affordability. The development's contribution to the local housing supply will benefit the existing market and provide options for a demographic, demographic in need of housing." I understand tonight you're considering a future land use plan amendment and not the approval of a development at this time. However, this is the first step towards more housing options in the area for our workforce. We have underbuilt as a community for over 10 years now. Things you have done such as allowing ADUs, funding housing division within, within the community development department, and working for more affordable housing are all great efforts, but this is a mathematical problem. Too few housing units push prices higher, plain and simple. Twenty years ago, almost to tonight, I was in this very room as the applicant for the annexation of Three Springs. Most of us can agree that Three Springs has been a benefit to the community in numerous ways, not just the hospital, but over 15% of the homes built are low-income tax credit apartments. Think about how much worse the problem would have been without Three Springs.
Mr. Vaughn, if you could wrap it up, please, thank you.
My last statement. Oh, by the way, Three Springs is on a dead-end waterline. It does, however, have a 4-million-gallon water storage tank onsite, whose capacity is far more than the full ballot of Three Springs will ever use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Foots, and if you could, when you come up to the podium, if you could state your name and whether you are a resident of the city or not. Right, sorry, I've seen that.
Mayor Youssef, council members, my name is Mike Faute. I am not a resident, I was born in Durango, grew up here, 30 years of life happened, moved to Grand Junction, spent 10 years there, eight years working for FCI. My wife and I, and our family moved back down here and spent the last 20 years working for FCI. When we moved back down here, Durango was about $100,000 more than the surrounding areas, and that was a factor in where we ended up. I recently bought a new vehicle in Durango, and my salesman was from Cortez, and the finance manager drove from Bloomfield. and my salesman was from Cortez, and the finance manager, um, drove from Bloomfield every day. Um, hiring staff at FCI, uh, we regularly recruit at about ten major universities in the Midwest and, uh, the mountain region of the United States, and housing costs in the last, I'd say, three to five years have become a major factor. It's hard to get the people to come here because housing is so expensive. I recently finished eight years on the school board at Bayfield. Um, a lot of our teachers drove from Durango and from the county. Um, many of our recently hired teachers are retired teachers from other states, so they have two pensions. It's the only way they can afford it. We've also hired teachers. They move, or they come here to find a house. They can't afford it and they leave. And so house, housing cost is very difficult for teachers. Um, construction costs have rocketed up, beginning most notably in two thousand twenty, starting with materials, and labor, um, followed that. That upward trend has slowed, but the damage is done. The only way it's going to retreat significant, significantly is if there's a recession or a depression. Um, and we hope that doesn't happen. Building in Durango is that much more challenging because we have a limited labor force, and importing labor is expensive largely because short-term housing is hard to find for our labor. So developers and cities are looking for alternatives. Um, and that should include modular building constructed in factories and trucked in. And modular and pre-manufactured both have those similar benefits. Government assistance has its place in solving our housing problem, but we can't subsidize our way out of the problem that we have. We have to have more product. Um, the motel conversions that are going on are a piece of the puzzle. I support those. Um, but they are not a solution in and of themselves. That would be like saying a paper straw solves our plastic problem. I'm just a start, but it doesn't solve it. Finally, um, our community values diversity. There was a community support for saving the West Side Trailer Park a few years ago, and everyone felt like a good thing had been done, and I agree with that. Um, fast forward to today, and the community has an opportunity to create more similar housing supply. And I feel strongly that we can't truly have diversity in our community unless we have a diverse housing supply. And I think modular, pre-manufactured housing has to be a part of that solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sweetie Marbury, if you can get up. If you can navigate. Uh, thank you. You can leave it there. Thank you.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and yes, I am a resident of the city of Durango. I came here tonight to ask some questions about Tree Farm. Um, I'm not commenting on the project itself or the validity of the need for housing. I certainly understand that. But I did read the comments from our own planning commissioners, Alma Evans and Susan Ullery. I too, as a city resident, want to know what about the water obligations from the city. Lake Nighthorse is in question here. Uh, there's no pipe coming out of Nighthorse at this present time. I'm very concerned about that as a city resident. And I'm also wanting to know, what is the timeline for water and sewer, sewer to be extended, uh, to this Tree Farm project? What is the timeline for the development of the Tree Farm? Usually when you approve a project, they want to go, you know? They, they need to make some money, and I understand that. But then if they don't have stable water, where does the water come from? If you accept this project, then you obligate the city to provide that water. That's logical. And I understand the master water plant is in question. I would ask that Ms. Baker tonight address those concerns about the issue of Lake Nighthorse, the water, and extending the water lines and the sewer lines to this project. So I appreciate everyone's passion about housing. Absolutely, I get it. But as a city resident, I do have these questions about stable water and sewer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sweetie. Um, and I apologize, but I am having a very difficult time reading the next person. Uh, it appears to be, it looks like a pen ran out, an S was, okay, please join us. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Shaliko Powers. I just go by Shaq. Um, I am not a resident of the city of Durango. I do work here multiple days a week, but I cannot afford to live here. So, um, I work for Region Nine Economic Development District, who also sent a letter of support in favor of this project, which I would, uh, like to read this evening. Region Nine Economic Development District of Southwest Colorado would like to express support of Harmony Communities' proposal to build manufactured homes in Durango. This project helps to address La Plata County's and the city of Durango shortage of housing units that will accommodate families. An economic development priority in all counties across the region. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment written by group policy for the Southwest Colorado Council of Governments states that over five hundred seventy units need to be developed between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-seven. Tree Farm Village would be a large step towards meeting the goal. With the median home price in Durango reaching seven hundred thirty thousand dollars, family housing options are becoming increasingly scarce. Tree Farm Village would offer an alternative to traditional site-built homes with the median sales price of a manufactured home being only one point four times the median household income compared to four times for a traditional site-built family home. Additionally, modern manufactured homes appreciated a similar right, rate to stick-belt homes. We appreciate that Tree Farm Village will be a manufactured home community with self-imposed rent control, which may help to mitigate some of the concerns about the cost of lot rent. We also recognize the importance of the, uh, strict rules and regulations that, uh, would be put in place to ensure the community remains desirable and well-maintained. Living in Tree Farm Village appears to be an attractive option for those who are working towards homeownership. At a monthly cost of about two thousand eighty-eight dollars, an individual earning median income of seventy-five thousand eighty-nine per year would pay significantly lower than the fifty percent plus of income that over twenty percent of renters in La Plata County currently pay for housing. Furthermore, residents of the Tree Farm Village would benefit from building equity in their own homes. Finally, we believe a home at Tree Farm Village would be anywhere from one thousand seven hundred fifty-five to two thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars less expensive per month than a site-built home in the municipality of Durango. Please give this project your strong consideration as a valuable addition to the housing options available in the city of Durango.
Thank you. Joe Lewandowski.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Joe Lewandowski. I live at seven oh eight O'Brien Drive in Durango. And, um, uh, I was on the planning commission for fifteen years here in the city, and I think, uh, that the council should really take a look at this in a deeper manner and even perhaps deny it at this point. I know this is preliminary, uh, but, um, basically what's been laid out here is a new development plan, and I think the council has to look at it, uh, as a development plan. Um, the problem that I have with this development is, is they talk about rent control. So I, so a fireman, a teacher, a nurse goes and buys, uh, one of these houses from the developer and then pays rent to the developer without owning the land that's underneath it. I own the land that's underneath, uh, my townhouse development. Um, and all of you who own homes also do. If you don't own that land, uh, that properties look like very nice, uh, facilities, but those are not going to increase in value over the year. And you have to realize that when people buy a house, that they're going to be in it for twenty, thirty years, and, and when they, or even less than that, they're going to expect to get some kind of a return. Um, they're going to put out a lot of money, and they're going to be basically paying the developer for, uh, uh, rent. This is basically a rental, uh, development. And I don't think that's a way for, uh, the community members that we want to build wealth in this community to build wealth, because they're not going to build wealth by buying a, essentially what is a rental property. Um, uh, the other thing is, uh, I hope that you will take into consideration the comments that, uh, Commissioners Ullery and Evans made. Uh, I share what, um, uh, Sweetie Marbury said about what are we looking at here for water use? Um, you know, the, the flows in the, in the Animus and the, and the Floria River have declined forty, fifty percent in the last twenty years. And I don't know about you, but I don't see anything on the horizon that says that water, um, that we're going to have more water anytime soon in the future. And I think we really start, we really need to start taking a, a hard look at how this water is being, uh, how much water we have. I know the city staff says we have great water rights, which I'm very thankful for, but having water rights and having actual water, uh, are, are two very different things. So I really hope that you would at least, uh, delay this and, and take a long, hard look at this uh, and, and make sure that this is really the kind of development we want for, you know, the people that we want in our community and to build our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Ullery.
Susan Ullery, uh, currently on the planning commission for the city of Durango, and I live in Durango. Um, it's very unusual for planning commissioners to not, can you not, okay, sorry, got to eat the microphone. Okay, it's very unusual for the planning commission to not come to the same conclusion that staff does. Um, and I think that really speaks to the quality of our staff. They're excellent. And unfortunately, in this case, I absolutely disagree with them. Um, and I wanted to come tonight to explain to you why I disagree. Um, water, that's the number one thing in my mind. Yes, we have excellent water rights, and we have a water plan. But this is Grandview. It's served by one of the more up-to-date, um, pipes. But, uh, it's got a two-day supply in the storage tank at current development levels in Grandview. So if we start extending water outside that boundary, and this wouldn't be an extension just to Tree Farm Village, should it be built. You get the water line out there, everybody's going to want to tap it. Um, so we can't just look at this as one's, one development because you're talking about infrastructure and what, what the demands will be on that infrastructure. So I was concerned enough that I read the comp plan sections and the water plan sections that are applicable here, and I was not reassured, um, because the consultant was very clear saying we, it's critical that the city adopt a redundant, uh, service to Grandview. Not only does it have our main hospital, um, it also has a fair number of residences. There are more coming on all the time. The planning commission has approved hmm, hundreds and hundreds of units for development out there. Whether they'll be built anytime soon, I don't know, because I don't know what the construction costs are going to do to those plans, but it's in the, it's in the works. Um, and so this project is asking us to push outside that boundary and head toward Elmore's Corner. Uh, the county road does not go through, so the kind of infrastructure that the city would eventually be acquiring to administer would be very expensive for the city to take on. Um, if you've driven out there, you will see what I'm talking about. It's not good. Uh, it would take a lot of resources from the city of Durango to bring that area up to what we consider city standards. Um, but in talking about the water plan, um, the lack of redundancy is, and the, and that being called critical infrastructure in the plan, that concerns me. Um, but one of the things that I'm really bothered about by this proposal is the developers trying to sell us on affordable housing with this project, and I don't see it. They don't own the land. They buy a box. It's on a frame that can roll out if you can move it. These projects are not designed to build equity for the person who buys that box. So what are we giving our people if we approve something like this?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Sorry, I was trying to.
I would say more if I had more.
Thank you. Um, bef- I know we have, uh, several residents online that would like to speak, but before, was there anyone who joined us late that would like to speak to this topic? Okay, you can jo- go ahead and join us now.
Hello, my name is Heather Holland, and I am a resident of Durango. Our property does back tree farms. I have several concerns with this development. Um, so I really feel it's important to think through all of the ramifications. Uh, to start with, water, we can talk about that. Traffic studies and stoplights that would be needed, trying to go out off of two thirty-three left or right can be very dangerous. Trying to turn into it can be very dangerous. If you are taking the traffic and exponentially increasing it, it will need a stoplight. It will need considerable changes at that intersection. People go very fast down that hill. They speed all the time. Other ramifications to consider are not only the cost of living and the equity that the homeowners would not receive. It is not affordable housing when you're paying two-thirds rent of the cost of what your mortgage is. So we're asking these people to spend two thousand dollars a month for an average income of seventy-five thousand dollars per family. That is not an affordable house, and you're getting no equity in your home. You're paying ten percent mortgage rates or close to that to the developers. And the other ramifications are you're completely cutting out the community. You're cutting out realtors. You're cutting out banks. You're cutting out construction companies, plumbers. You're cutting out all of the people that are needed from HVAC to anyone who's building a unit. So yes, you are providing housing units, but you are not providing quality housing. You're not providing jobs for the community. And it's not a good alternative for housing. You're also not creating a space to have any sort of commercial. So there's no grocery stores out there. You're saying we're putting low-income people out to somewhere where they can't get groceries. The closest place is Walmart. There's no place to get fuel out there. There is no place to get a bus stop. The closest bus stop is Three Springs, so you're asking people to walk two miles to a bus stop or ride their bicycle. So there are a lot of ramifications that really need to be thought through of how this impacts our community, how this actually benefits the citizens who need affordable housing.
Thank you. Um, all right, with that, we'll move to our, okay, it looks like we have someone else who'd like to speak. Please join us. I apologize. And after this, is there anyone else live? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Frank Sent. I'm a forty-two-year resident here of Durango. I also own the property under question. Um, and thanks for letting me talk. I'll make it brief. When we received the offer to sell the property to the applicant, uh, we were elated. Um, later, their plans for a manufactured home community was discussed, and I was a bit skeptical, um, honestly. So my first mission, uh, was, was, uh, my first vision was that of a rundown mobile home park like those that exist in many places around the United States and Colorado, Durango, et cetera, and the county. So I decided to inform myself about this proposed concept. So I drove through almost every mobile home park in the county and the city and actually found that I'm driving through them in other places too, which isn't healthy. Um, anyway, um, what I did find, yeah, typically there were a lot of them that were rundown and poorly designed parks. But I also noticed that every unit, almost every unit and every home was occupied. That surprised me. So that means people accept that as a viable way to live. Uh, next, I explored the modern mobile homes, now called manufactured housing, and was impressed by the features, the quality, and the livability of the units. Lastly, I explored the harmonycommunities.com website and looked at the communities, and it became clear that today's manufactured communities are a far cry from the past mobile home park. Harmony Communities is a longtime experienced community developer, and what they're proposing is an extremely attractive, uh, user-friendly pool, tennis court, et cetera. Um, yeah, their presentation highlighted all this, but I think some of the points deserve emphasis. Um, number one being the voluntary rent control, number two being the pricing in the two hundred thousands, and number and number three, which is probably the largest impediment to homeownership besides price, and that's down payment. And if you'll notice that the presentation showed ten percent down payments. All this is unattainable in Durango's market. So as you consider this vote, it appears factual to say that a no vote tonight dooms this project immediately. It will be dead. A yes vote, however, will, does not give the project approval, as many have led you to believe here. And it doesn't, tonight's not going to answer all the questions that have arisen here. But by giving it a yes vote, it allows it to go to the next stage. And the next stage is a very arduous process. Conceptual, preliminary, final, planning commission, city council, county commissioners. Your water department's going to answer the questions. They seem to be probably the most knowledgeable, I would think, on the water system. And so a yes vote allows this project to move forward in the process. So all of your questions can be explored and hopefully answered.
Frank, we're, we're over time.
I am?
Surprisingly, I thought we were going to be quick.
At least I talked too much. All right.
You can conclude quickly, though.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Let's move on to our virtual commenters, please.
Yes, Mayor, first we have Alma.
Great, thank you.
Hello, this is Alma Evans. I'm also on the planning commission and also did vote to deny this when it came before the joint county and city. And I just wanted to summarize what my concerns were and what for my denial on the, in August. And it was basically comp plan section five three one about the need to ensure that new growth does not outstrip our ability to serve. And I think with the expansion of the water, that definitely falls under that. Also, on the comp plan, objective ten one is that adequate public services be in place or assured prior to approval of urbanized development and phase development subject to installation of improvements in accordance with the CIP. We have already approved the planning commission over eight hundred and forty units within South Fork and Three Springs. Staff has made great strides in affordable housing with the revamp of fair share and the work toward the goal of providing workforce housing within the city. Phase two of Three Springs has yet to even be initiated. I believe this will provide additional opportunities for homeownership within our city boundaries and that we currently have. The infill of Three Springs, to me, is preferable to spreading out into new areas outside of the Durango District Plan. And the city's water system master plan does recommend, it's in section seven six one one, for a redundant water supply line to be scheduled before expanding the water service. And it's not the, it's the transfer of the water, not the sourcing or treating, which is the issue here. So I think we do not, it's not prudent to commit our water resources and CIP dollars right now to facilitate a project that has yet to be vetted or approved. So that is, that was my concerns in August. It remains my concerns today. And that is, I really appreciate the time and your consideration. Thank you so much.
Great, Susan, we're losing you. You've slowly faded out. Are you done?
I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment. We'll move on to the next commenter.
Yes, Mayor, next we have Rex Yuden.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the comments are out of order, and they can rightfully be terminated by the chair.
I would like to terminate them. Okay. Move, we'll move on to the other. Thank you for your help. Thank you. Can we have the remaining commenter? I believe we have one more? Or is that it? Oh, five more.
Yes, next is Scott Mason.
Thank you. Oh, I can see it now. Thank you.
Now, you have to let each one go, but as soon as they start speaking out of order, you can terminate them. Whoever has control of the people that are online, as soon as you hear something that the chair deems out of order, you need to turn that off.
And I'll try to listen carefully.
Yeah.
Sorry to the public. This is hard to control from here. We'll go to the next commenter then.
Yes, that's Amon Smokowicz.
Okay, we're going to out of order this one as well, please. God, my apologies. It'd be nice if we could have this live. All right, we'll try the next one, please.
All right, next is Alex Weaver.
We're going to do out of order on this one as well, please. I'm so sorry to the public. Can we see who else would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, next we have Glenda Farmer.
Okay. Can you please let us state your name and whether or not you are a resident of the city of Durango?
Glenda, you're muted.
So unfortunately, we can't. This is a limited, let me, let me explain. This is a limited public forum, which, excuse me, this is a limited public forum where we're required to take public comment. The public comment has to be related to the issue before the council. These people have done this in other jurisdictions around the country, and it's something that you have to tolerate with respect to free speech. As soon as the comments go away from the subject at hand, they're out of order and we can stop it. But if we stop it at any point before that, we're going to be accused of limiting free speech. So unfortunately, this is what we have to tolerate in the government that we live in, where free speech is a right that we all enjoy. Again, it's a limited public forum, so it's limited to comments on the subject. And as soon as they go away from that subject, it's out of order and we can stop it. And that's the best we can do tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. We're, we're going to move forward. I'm going to, I'm going to stop, stop the discussion as the chair of this meeting. Okay, we're going to keep going with public comment. We just heard from our city attorney. Can we please go to the next commenter, please? And I will do my best to control the situation.
My name is Glenda Farmer. Can I, can I please have a chance to speak?
You may have a chance to speak. Can you please let us know if you are a resident of the city of Durango or not?
Yes, I am a resident of Durango. I've lived here nine years now. I'm also a board member for the Lived Experience Advisory Board and have been unhoused. I also have knowledge about the, the area from Elmore's Corner to two thirty-three. That was where I lived prior to becoming unhoused. It used to be a trailer court at three zero three six five, I believe. Oh, no, three zero one one seven, highway one sixty, where it was an old mobile home park. They tore out all the mobile homes when my family lived in that home. And during COVID, my family was evicted due to structure issues. And I moved to two thirty-three, right there, eight sixty, County Road two thirty-three with my family. And I became evicted from there as well. But when I lived at the, where the mobile home park was, the water at that property, at the house, was excellent. It was never shortened supply. The well was, was wonderful. They took the trailers out saying that they weren't, didn't, weren't able to supply proper water to the trailers, but I'm not real certain how that went down. I just, I'm speaking up as an unhoused resident, a part of this Lived Experience Advisory Board as an executive member, and I'd like to see this go through. I know plenty of people that would love to, to own property and have the opportunity to have something happen like that. And basically, that's pretty much all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter, please.
Yes, next we have Aaron.
Aaron, will you please state your name and whether or not you are a resident of the city? Not hearing anyone?
Actually, it looks like Levi was brought in. I don't know if that is someone else who raised their hand.
We can move on to next. Do we have any others?
Yes, Mayor, I've brought Levi in as someone who raised their hand, but they appeared.
Levi, if you'd like to unmute yourself and join us for public comment, you may now. Not hearing Levi. Let's move on to the next.
Yes. Next is Matthew North.
May I suggest that we take a recess?
Okay.
You need a vote to do that?
I make a motion to recess. Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes, thank you.
So late.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
All right, we're going to get ready to start again. This is a tough meeting to run tonight. Jose? Thank you all for joining us again. I'm waiting for an update from our city manager. Ben, if you'll please note on those comments that we called those commenters out of order. Okay, we, we have no further commenters online, so we're going back. Okay, we have two, two more individuals that like to speak next, I believe. Vicki, we, you said Paul O'Neill? Okay. Please join us. And if you could state that you are a part of the project?
Yes, Paul O'Neill. I am a resident of Durango. I'm also a part of the project team. Back in two thousand and one, I was also hired by the city of Durango to my firm, SEH, to write the water master plan. And so I just wanted to clarify a few things that keep getting brought up about that. There's a section in there called the Ewing Mesa Grandview Finished Water Supply Line. Currently, there's a sixteen inch line that runs through Boto, Walmart, Home Depot, comes around and is pumped up into the Grandview Tank above Three Springs. That system is fine. It has been working for the last twenty some years. There's a four million gallon storage tank above there. The master plan is looking for future, the future city projects that need to be done as the city continues to grow. So there is a section in there that says it is critical that a redundant line be installed. Part of that statement is that that line is needed for capacity when the city hits fifteen million gallons or the year twenty forty-five, based upon those growth projections. And so, excuse me. So the, the line would be needed in twenty forty-five or fifteen million gallons per day. The twenty forty-five comes from if the city continues to grow at the rate that we did this study in twenty twenty-one, that that's when that trigger point would be hit. And so I wanted to clarify that. And then also reiterate a little bit what Frank Sinton said, that this is not a completed project. There are still a lot of steps. Traffic studies, water studies, design plans, reviews, still to come. And so this is the first step of many. Thank you.
Hi, Andy Farley. I am a resident. I spoke on the last. I am also a mayor post resident and a neighbor of the proposed Tree Farm Village. And with our neighboring communities and all the folks that have grown up here and seen the county grow and seen the success of it, I can appreciate the expansion idea, but I can, I can't get behind a rental development that is manufactured homes, not many jobs for the local community, and rent checks going to California for every space that is designed. And with all the planning committee members that have backed the water issues and wanting to designate the resources to the expansion of Three Springs, which has been very successful, I would agree with them and hope you would as well.
Wonderful, thank you. It looks like we can now close the public comment. And now we will have council discussion. I think that we have a lot of questions here. We may need more time.
I was going to ask, Mayor, do you think there's maybe appetite for council to either extend the initial time to maybe ten minutes in that first round or maybe subsequent rounds if needed?
I, so your motion on the table is to extend?
Yeah, I moved to allow for ten minutes in this first round, just so we can ask questions and have members of the, you know, the people with experience in this that accurately answer those questions.
Wonderful. Do I have a second? All second. Council discussion. Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
No.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
All right, ten minutes per counselor. Who would like to start with questions?
I can certainly start. I've probably got a lot more questions than I have anything else, but you know, there's, there seems to be a lot of, a lot of consternation around water and water capacity. Ms. Baker, could I get your expertise on this, please? And I guess I got twofold, and I'm not going to put you too, too much on the spot. You know, the, the developer is saying that they're going to pay for the line. Do we have, I mean, just a very rough ballpark of what a potential water line that would extend from Three Springs to this development? How much, and you know, I mean, I don't know.
Good evening, counselors and mayor. I'm Allison Baker, Public Works Director. And we do actually, as part of a development process, have the extension of our water facilities handled the cost by the developer. That would be very, very hard to estimate right now without knowing what the route would be, what the sizing would be, if any pumping capability would be required. There are many factors that would be later decided in design, this being a review of the land use rather than a development review. I'm unable to answer that question effectively.
Okay, thank you. I guess my second question would be, there's a lot of development and growth within this area, especially in Three Springs. I'm also a resident of Three Springs. You know, we have the BDL apartments coming online. That's four hundred and ninety-seven units, anywhere from five to a thousand. More residents going to be just in that one division. Plus, we've got the High Lama Lane development coming online. And then we have potentially another five hundred to a thousand units within phase two within Three Springs. How will that potentially impact that water capacity? And will that four million dollar, four million, four million gallon tank be able to sustain that in addition to this potential three hundred and ten new? that in addition to this potential three hundred and ten new units?
And on that item, I don't have the, excuse me, uh, the calculations that went into designing the four million gallon capacity. However, the comprehensive plan growth rate includes those anticipated developments, um, including the Village Two, um, expansion of Three Springs, which is a significant number of units. Um, those, those pieces of the development are factored into, uh, the anticipated ongoing, uh, growth within the area that leads to the calculations of twenty forty-five being a cutoff time, fifteen million gallons per day as the flow that would become problematic for the, the design that we currently have. And as would be approved by any additions to the system of future developments.
Like potentially La Posta, that whole, like the La Posta development, um, with
Yes.
But, you know, I mean, that's gonna be pretty significant. I mean, who knows what sort of light industrial, um, applications are gonna need, uh, more, more of their rate of water. Um, are there any existing homes on this property? Um, no, it's all just, just vacant land? Excellent, thank you. Um, and then I guess I'll ask the, the developer, um, right now, you saying that there's potentially, you know, uh, room for purchasing the home? Um, what sort of, I think I, I need to get into the minutia a little bit between modular and, and manufactured. Um, those are two different, um, funding mechanisms. Um, modular, you can get traditional funding mechanisms, modular, you cannot. So, um, there are local lenders that usually take a little bit of a higher risk for people in the community, but usually they won't find those loan programs at lower than, you know, are more than sixty percent loan to value. So that means if you're gonna buy a home for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that means you need to pretty much fork over um, a hundred thousand dollars as a down payment. Um, are you, in addition to that rent, um, do you know what, where, what is the, the, is it a modular or manufactured? And do you guys have any anticipation of where some of those funding mechanisms are potentially at play with, with some of your previous experience?
If you could please join us at the podium.
Come on up.
Yeah, so there, there are plenty of lenders throughout the United States that do this, uh, Twenty First Century Mortgage, Triad, um, F A, FHA loans, um, where you, depending on your, your credit, uh, and your income, you only have to put down as little as, uh, ten percent. So these are, some regional banks offer this type of financing, but it's not your, uh, you know, traditional loan. So, um, you're, the monthly all-in cost, including the space rent, uh, for a target for a home in Tree Farm, at the target purchase price will be right around anywhere from two thousand to twenty-four hundred dollars per month. That's one of the questions you asked.
And, and I'm sorry if I'm kind of putting the cart before the horse. Um, what do you anticipate for that rent being per space, uh, potentially, um, in addition to what the, what the mortgage, uh, payment would be?
Right around seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So mortgage, monthly mortgage payment, which includes, uh, you know, principal and interest is right around sixteen hundred dollars. Rent, which pays for all the common, uh, amenities, right around seven fifty. And then insurance for a manufactured home at eighty-three dollars per month gets you to right around twenty-four hundred dollars.
Okay, so, okay, um, what else do I have? So what? What other mechanisms? I, I know we have a lot of, of other things that need to get done. When, when do you wanna start development on this project? I mean, it's, what's your timeline?
Soon as this, I mean, we, we've been at this for a year and a half, uh, when we, we originally entered Escrow. But, you know, we didn't anticipate it would be taking this long, but we're committed to the project, to the development, um, as, as soon as possible. So, you know, pending what, what happens, you know, we're on to the, the next step. Again, this is just to change the land use. And then there's a bunch of other things that need to happen, so however long that takes. But as soon as, you know, that is complete, we'll be ready to start construction.
I, I understand that this is just for the changing the land use, but I, I wanna make sure that we're processing all of our Ts and Dots and RIs before we commit to any sort of rezoning issue. And then, so we talked about traffic a lot. I mean, there's a lot of density in this area. We got Florida Mesa School right there. Um, it's, it's a really busy intersection. Again, I live in Three Springs, and so I'm, I'm quite aware. When, when do you anticipate, you know, kind of moving through with a traffic study to see what that density could potentially look like with the addition to, um, Three Springs and that, that B D L, um, 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 apartment complex kind of being built in? What does that, do you guys have an anticipated, like, time where you actually will have a traffic study being done?
Yeah, from my understanding, uh, yes, we'll be working with, with C dot, uh, and doing a full traffic study. And I believe that happens next prior to any approval of, of a project or development. We do have preliminary calculations, and per our calculations, we don't believe any traffic light is going to, uh, have to be installed. But if there is, uh, we are prepared to continue to move forward and support that.
I think that's all I have for the first round.
Great. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a few questions probably for some, some staff and some, um, potentially. Okay, so I have some questions on the property. It's in the county. Yes. It's, do we have plans to annex this property in the city?
We do not have plans to annex this into the city anytime in the future. Annexation has to be have a continuous boundary or come in as a, a larger area. And they would have to have a number of, um, property owners all coming in at once.
How many projects have we done in recent-ish years where we have done infrastructure to a project that is not in the city?
Quite a few. I can't give you a percentage, but, you know, this is part of our service area. So our comprehensive plan, um, states that we will provide water within this boundary. There are time, you know, time frames of it around, but, um, it is, no one else will, is slated to provide water to this area. City took this as part of our comprehensive plan, so we are the service provider.
There's been a lot of talk. Counselor Woodruff asked a bunch of questions, um, about the project itself. Who will approve the project? Is it the city, the county?
I'm glad you asked that, 'cause I wanted to clarify that. This will not come, you will not, the city council will not see this project.
Yeah.
Joint planning will be involved. So our planning commission will be involved in the project approvals, but it is a county project. They're, they're just using our water and they're meet, they'll have to meet our standards, have to meet all the city standards.
Of what?
Of development standards.
All development standards?
If they
The roads, the everything.
They have to meet all of our city standards. So if and when we're, it is eligible for annexation, it is easily annexed into the city.
Who's gonna provide services like trash, recycling, snow removal?
They, they would have to deal with all that. Yep, all that's them. Um, it's also not in the city sewer district. So just so people know, it will be served by their South Durango or Lo, Loma Linda. I'm not sure which. South Durango.
Um, okay. Um, here's my concerns. Um, we don't know what, I love the idea of rent control. I was just Googling a little bit of rent in that area for like a three-bedroom, two-bath house is over three thousand dollars a month. I don't know who, I couldn't afford that for me and my boys to live in, in a house I don't own for rent. Um, but you don't have numbers is the issue, and we will not see this project again. So this is our only shot as city councilors to, like, have a say and to let you know how we feel about this project and about the development. I did, like, um, Mr. Fouts said, it's, uh, something about the piece of the puzzle or something to that de- degree. It is a piece of the puzzle. Um, I don't, it's not all about owning homes anymore and creating wealth. Is that great? Yes, people rent, we have, we have deed restricted, restricted houses, and, and then people need this as well. We need, uh, lots of variety of homes in order to make it work here in Durango. Um, I'm not saying this is a terrible idea. I'm not, I lived in a, my, my first home I bought in Durango was out in Breen, and it was a manufactured home. I've lived in manufactured homes. They can be beautiful. Um, I, yes, so I'm not, I'm not saying I hate the project. I don't like a few things. I don't like that we don't, that there is so much development happening out there with, that hasn't happened yet, that has been approved with Three Springs Phase Two, with La Posta, this, the, um, apartment complex, and that we are, um, we're fine with water now, but what happens if every one of those projects goes through and now we're being irresponsible? We're not responsible for transit out there. The county's gonna be responsible for transit out there. We're, you know, there's a bunch of things that we're gonna approve the, this project to kind of go forward, and we're not gonna be responsible for, we, we can't be responsible for a lot of things and making sure it's successful. That is what's really hard for me sitting right here right now, is that I, I won't have a say in what your rent control is going to be. You know, not me, us, we won't, like, we won't have a say in a lot of those things.
Can I, can I make one clarification? You will see the implied consent agreement. So you will approve the contract with the developer to have water.
How does it look with the fair, new fair share agreement that we have coming on now?
It, depending on when they get in, they, there is a, well, no, this is, I don't know. I'll have to talk to Eva. That's, I don't know the answer.
Do you have an answer for that? Or no, Eva-ish? Sorry.
Sorry throwing you under the bus there, Eva.
The one in the middle in the back, and you come all the way through. Thanks.
I'm not, these are rental lots, so I, but they're bought homes, I don't know how that fits in.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's even addressed, so.
Good evening, Housing Innovation Manager Eva Henson. Uh, fair share is underway. It'll be coming before you, uh, probably earlier in the springtime, um, with adding rental development. In this particular case, we have done it in the past, uh, with some other projects with extending the water. And so right now it would be homeownership would apply, but if we add rental before, that would go before them, it would be included.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I know this is land use only. That's the only thing we're talking about. I don't, it's not really the project, but it is hard to separate the details of traffic and utilities and making sure that we are being responsible. Um, I think it is super important that, um, we don't, we don't approve growth that we can't support, um, that we can't currently support. Um, and, and, and it's something that may strip our ability to serve our current residents and, um, what, it's what makes Durango amazing. So, um, that's kind of what I'm struggling with. I love, like, if we're gonna grow and we're gonna have houses, th- this is the exact spot we should do it. Um, and so I'm at a little bit of a, so I'll shut up now. Thanks.
Uh, other councilors? Counselor Bossmans, Counselor Yazi?
Oops, thank you. Paul O'Neill, if you could answer a question. What I'm concerned about is when you were talking about the stats for the Grandview Water Tank and the supply, uh, line that comes out of there, which is sixty inches?
Six, yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. And you mentioned the figure fifteen million gallons per day usage. At what, how, how many households or residents would meet that, uh, demand?
Fifty percent more than exists today.
So we've got quite a growth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yeah, thank you all for presenting and answering the questions so far. It's quite a process. I'm not sure how this impacts or has impacted the property developer, the neighbors, and, uh, and our governance. To me, this is a local, logical growth area. Uh, I think we need housing, all types, but I'm gonna focus on what's on this agenda today, which is the di- the density. So maybe the first clarification is, or I'll just read out what I see in the agenda item, is this property already has the same density, except for concentrated on the southern part of the property. Is that correct? I'm gonna ask a lot of yes or no questions.
Yes.
Okay, so the property has the right, the property owner has the right to have a certain density. So we're not really talking too much about density changes, except for where the density takes place. Then it also says the applicants have successfully changed the joint planning area map boundary. And so the question is, does that make it a requirement or an option for the city to provide water?
So it, the joint planning area map has nothing to do with the water service, except the city has stated that they aren't going to allow the extension of water outside of the joint pla- planning area map, because that, we want our planning commission and our standards to apply to anything that uses our water. And that's the city's policy. So that's why the joint planning area map needed to be extended, so that we can, um, have those controls. Otherwise, this would just go to planning, this county's planning commission, council would see the, the implied consent agreement, but our planning commission wouldn't be a part of it. And so that's our standard. That map has been already amended. That happened. That's done. It's, it's for, per the intergovernmental agreement, that's a county planning commission decision. Um, this is still the comp plan.
Okay, so going back, so if, if the city says we don't have the capacity or the pipeline is too small, we don't supply water? And the developer is out of luck?
Correct.
Okay.
No matter what the land use cat is, yes.
Now, the, um, this is the first time it came to city council, and I also want to see some background so that the people that follow our meetings are aware versus the people of the county, uh, because it's been discussed at the county, county mostly, and then planning commission. Um, if I understood you correctly, this was, this property was first part of the joint planning area. I'm distinguishing between joint planning area, which is the city, and the county combined joint planning area.
Correct.
Then we have a comprehensive plan that has urbanized area, which is a document that we generate, but it doesn't have any value really for the county, I guess. And then you have the county who has district maps. So the joint planning area, this property was initially located in the joint planning area. Then it was removed from the joint planning area, and then recently, because of this project probably, it's been put back into the joint planning area.
Correct.
Is that correct? And it's purely about wa- access to water, even though there is no guarantee that they get access to water?
Correct.
Now, when it got removed from the joint planning area, does that come in front of council?
Um, it was a, what it was is it was an amended intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. So yes, it was, it was a negotiated change in that agreement, and part of that included the joint planning area map.
It's, okay, so the map, the physical map, that was in two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen, is that correct?
Two thousand fourteen.
So the map, the two thousand fourteen map shows this property as not being part of the joint planning area?
Correct.
And then recently, it was added back in?
Correct. Under following the guidelines of that same agreement that the county, that the city and county both signed, and they gave the power of changing the boundary to the county planning commission.
Okay, so the, the county actually made that change, and we have really no awareness, if necessary? I mean, we will probably be aware.
It's done in a joint planning commission process, but right, it is and doesn't go through council.
Okay, so that's a very interesting, uh, item, I think, for governance, because they can change the maps all we want, and we, we won't even see it. Unless a project comes along that falls in the, in the, in the revised area.
It's one of the problems with that agreement, yes.
Okay. Let's see, what is my other question? Actually, if someone else wants to go first, or look at my notes, I have a couple.
I can ask some questions. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and start then. Um, so I did have the same question that Counselor Woodruff asked if we do have the water capacity to extend. Vicki, you can just stay up here, maybe, I think, and Allison, all of you, maybe, also Paul O'Neill. Um, 'cause, you know, I'm just concerned about whether we have the water capacity to extend our service area as well, and I just wanna ask it again, um, because I am concerned about the fact that as Commissioner Ul, Ulery suggested, that, you know, we've approved eight hundred and forty units out there, and they went through some of those projects, we need to maintain our quality of life for our residents and our service. So I want to ask from staff again, do we have the capacity to service an entire area in the Grandview area? I know that's a growth area for us, but can we service it?
So just quickly, we're not changing our service area boundary. Our service area boundary is the entire comp plan boundary. That's what they used for their water study. That's what we did. We did all those water studies when we moved, when we created that as our boundary back in two thousand We did all those water studies when we moved, when we created that as our boundary back in two thousand seven, no, two thousand seventeen. We affirmed it in two thousand, wait, two thousand seven is when we did it, two thousand seventeen is when we reaffirmed that boundary. So, and that's the numbers that they use. They use our future land use map for their water study, which has all those, um, all the same land uses.
All right. How do we, as, uh, I think it was Commissioner Evans suggested and asked in her, uh, in her notes in the planning commission meeting, but I'd like to bring it public, how do we reconcile with our comp plan? Um, section five point five, the growth management plan, that says that adequate public service be in place or assured prior to approval of urbanized development, subject to installation of improvements in accordance with our CIP? How do we reconcile that?
Uh, we, uh, Alison Baker, Public Works Director. Um, we do actually require that the water plan be submitted and reviewed by engineering. Um, so there is no, no agreement ahead of the, um, the actual, um, construction of the water. I think the, a few facts to look at along those lines is that, um, we are currently far behind on, um, the use of water. Right now, our maximum water day is eight point five million gallons per day. Um, our average is three point five. And what Paul has mentioned is we're looking at, this becomes an issue that we need to address as far as increasing redundancy in that area. We have fifteen significantly, I mean, um, at least two times higher use than we've currently got. The various, uh, developments that have been mentioned, as those are reviewed, the consideration of how does this impact the whole area is analyzed. They're not looked at in a vacuum. They're looked at to see, do they fit within the parameters of the water system as we're planning to develop it? And I think those are the questions that the, um, the planning is looking at, is wanting to make sure that those plans are in place for future development. I think that's, um, uh, appropriate, reasonable and valuable addition to the, the study that you wouldn't, um, go out and start building or even agreeing to future building without knowing that the city was in the position to, uh, accomplish and maintain the master plan.
Okay, that leads me to another follow-up question, also from one of our commissioners. How does this reconcile with our water master plan that says or recommends that a redundant water supply be constructed to Grand View? Should that, and should that not be on our CIP plan and schedule before we extend services?
Our CIP, our CIP plan does not extend, um, to the time when we would anticipate, um, twenty forty-five, uh, is when we anticipate we would need that. And we have not planned out that far in terms of CIP planning.
Why is this not, I'm just going to ask a super basic question. But why is this not serviced out of South Durango Sewer District?
It is. They handles the sewer there, yes.
So they have the capacity to service from their existing topography there?
As far as we know, yes.
Um, and then, I'm just going to ask also for the record. Is it true then that the criterion of our utilities and services available being met since the developer is paying the, to extend the line and pay for the tap fees?
That would be subject to a review of the engineering design when submitted for a development review. At, based on the master plan, we have plenty of capacity. We have, uh, uh, excuse me, we have thirty-nine million gallons per day in water rights. Um, we have more water rights than we have the capacity to treat. The treatment plant capacity currently is fourteen MGD. Um, we would either need an additional water plant, um, to get anywhere near using our water rights. So from a land use, uh, point of view, the master plan supports, um, supplying water within, within the comp plan boundary.
Okay.
As potentially revised.
All right. Uh, question for Eva, sorry, back row, maybe we, one of you guys can answer it. Um, I'm just wondering if we will have the opportunity to adva- uh, amend our fair share agreement, um, and our, our fair share guidelines such that, uh, it includes rentals? And thus this property would then therefore be, uh, applicable to the, our fair share agreement. I think it would be, uh, if we're extending water to that, it should, it seems to me that this should be, uh, uh, fall under our fair share agreements. Can we get that done in time?
Yes, if we adopt the fair share guidelines to include rental development before it goes before the joint planning commission, then it would apply to the project.
And when would this go to the joint planning commission? If approved?
It's a, it's a ways out, for sure. And the implied consent agreement that you will go under contract with the developer does allow you to put in those sort of, those sort of, um,
The city?
Mm-hmm. The city that allowed you to put in those sort of agreements.
Okay. And then for the developer, I understand then that, if I'm understanding correctly, in, in, the developer may in some cases be the bank for these projects. Because that's not the case. It will be the other banks that you mentioned.
No, that's not the case.
Okay, can you explain?
Uh,
I'm sorry.
Okay, we are the developer. We own the, the underlying land. Uh, if a would-be resident were to come in and acquire a home, they purchased that home through a twenty-first mortgage. Uh, that's for a, a triad, that's the lender. Um, they serve as the bank, and they pay us a, uh, a space rent. So, um, but we do not serve as a, a, we're not a bank. I don't know why.
Okay. Okay, I was, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not, there's, there, it, it's not more difficult for them to get loans since they don't own the land?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Um, okay, I think, um, that is all my current questions. Counselors, I think we should go back, and since there's been a lot of questions, answers, let me ask, there might be more questions again. So I think we go back to our three minutes. Hey, councils?
Um, I just have one point, uh, to make, you know. CHAF, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, um, regards households spending more than thirty percent of their gross annual income on housing are considered cost burdened. Um, Eva, could you remind me, uh, for a family of four, what the AMI? And I'm so sorry to bring on, it's, it's, it's roughly eighty-three thousand, I think?
Bear with me.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll be looking at the twenty twenty-three income limit and maximum rent tables, uh, for La Plata County, provided from the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, as you referenced. Um, so as an example of four-person household earning a hundred percent area median income, to give you perspective, could earn at or below one hundred and three thousand nine hundred dollars for their four-person household. And for a two-bedroom modest property, could not exceed two thousand three hundred and forty dollars a month.
Okay.
To not be cost burdened.
Right, so the twenty-four hundred dollar, uh, per month inclusive of that rent, um, yeah, so the, it, it's looking like it's twenty-seven percent or just under twenty-eight percent.
It typically is right around that thirty percent to not be cost burdened.
That's a hundred percent AMI, and we talked about the missing middle. What's the eighty percent threshold?
So the eighty percent for a four-person household could not exceed eighty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And when I present to you later on this evening, I have that demonstrated on a slide for you. So that's a, a good example for, um, eighty percent AMI. So the rental rate combined could not exceed one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
So it looks like for maybe an eighty percent AMI family, that, that rental rate at twenty-four hundred dollars a month would, the, the cost, the burden would be thirty-four point seven percent. Um, yes.
Uh, so that, yeah, so, yes, you're correct.
I know.
And, uh, we failed to mention that entry-level homes in our community. So I gave you a target price of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's how we got to the twenty-four hundred dollars a month. We'll be offering homes for as little as one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Uh, so that's going to be right around two thousand dollars per month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I thought that the two hundred and twenty-five was that starting and two seventy-five was the, was the top?
Starting is one seventy-five, possibly lower, uh, twos, you know, two twenty-five, two seventy-five max if someone wants to come in and.
It is, and could you please clarify, the one hundred and seventy-five, um, is that, um, how many bedrooms? Is, is that one, two?
Uh, two to three.
Two to three?
Yeah.
Okay.
The difference in, in, in price is not, uh, typically a square footage. Uh, we, we tried to show a range because people will have the ability to come in, and if they want some, um, different appliances or sheds and porches and stuff like that, that's where you start to add.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Uh, the counselors, go ahead.
Yeah, I am, I have one more question, I'll make my comment on my vote, Paul. The, the project follows the county's planning process. And then, um, after this, this, uh, density issue is resolved, it would be a major land use permit process and a sketch and conceptual stage, plan stage. Now, my question is, uh, why are we as a council discussing this density? Is this because it's a county property with county regulations? Or today, does the county now all of a sudden follow our, uh, land use and development?
So in order for us to serve water, they have to meet our comprehensive plan, which is why they're before you tonight. And then they also, under contract, will meet our, all of our development standards. Which, so we will have our engineering and all of our staff, our planning staff, reviewing the project, even though it's not in the city limits, we'll still be reviewing it for our standards jointly with the county staff, and then it goes to joint planning.
So, but I, I still am confused because we have no say on the zoning of this property, do we? Because the county will adopt the density requirements or the zoning specifications, and that has to meet whatever later will come to our, the joint planning commission.
Correct, it'll go through the county process. They don't have zoning, but they do have a land use map. They tend to defer to the city's map. And they, and that's what they did, is they, when they moved the Durango District Plan Boundary and took this area out of, or added this area into it, they're adopting our map as a part of that. So it will, we'll have the same density.
So, so the, when the county does their zoning, they basically just say, this is what we want, and this is our, because it comes in front of us, and we don't have much say over that property. This is where I'm a little bit confused.
Right, they could not ask for city water, they could go through a development proposal through the county right now, um, and do something totally different. They're in this process because they want city water. And they don't meet our comprehensive plan.
But we're making a density, uh, change to the property. A property where we don't have anything to say over because it's not in city limits. It is a county property, or am I missing something?
Well, our comprehensive plan is, does go outside of the city limits. Um, and that's to plan for the growth of your city. And the, there's a three-mile plan requirement by the state, and you, so we are, but it's only an advi- I mean, our plan doesn't give them that, any vested rights. They have to still go through a review process, get it approved through the county process before they can develop. And they also, and on top of that, they have to meet all of our standards because they're asking us for water. So this is just something that they have to do for us. I don't know what the densities they had under the county's old plan was, but, um, they need to do this for the city to, to okay the water.
Thank you. Other counselors?
Um, one quick question, because it was asked, and then, and then I just thought it would be good to clarify. How much money would the city be spending before the project is approved? Someone said that we shouldn't spend money on a project if it's not approved. How much money would the city be spending before the project is actually approved to go forward?
Besides planning staff time and engineering time?
Yeah, none, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I think my biggest thing is, um, if, if we're not prepared for a project like this, water, transit, like all the things, if we're not, we need to be. Because this is where we need to start, we, we need housing. We desperately need housing to, for staffing, for my business, for Mike's business, for every, like, we need to be able to have a place for our workers to work. And so if, if city staff says we don't have the water to, to do this, we need to figure out how. But a city staff does say we do, and so I, I have to go along, I'm not a water expert. And, um, and so I'd have to go along with what city staff thinks, so that's my comment.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for giving us all this, um, great information. Okay, so what I've heard is that we have adequate water for quite a while. We don't have to do anything until twenty forty-five on, uh, redundancy. Um, we certainly do need workforce housing. We're in a crunch because, um, we need to have, we need to staff our businesses. Um, and we have no intentions at, at this point of annexing that land. So what is happening here is we're just increasing the density per our standards with the city. And that's our obligation. Okay, thank you.
Um, there's some questions raised about traffic, and I'm concerned, uh, you know, we haven't talked about it that much. We've been focusing a lot on water. But I am concerned about just the sheer number of people coming in and out of that road. Um, can someone talk to me about, you know, have we done enough adequate traffic studies to add another three hundred and ten homes on top of potentially eight hundred and forty going in at Village Two?
We have not done a traffic study. We've done some preliminary estimates of traffic volumes from the IT manuals, which set traffic rates per house, per apartment, per model home. And I believe the number currently is seven hundred and fifty-six trips per day.
For this, for this development?
Yep, and so I like to, the peak hour is typically the issue, the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour. And so that will go through C-dots, um, access permit, we'll need an access permit from them. So they'll be reviewing the traffic study along with the city and the county. Um, but the P, the AM peak is a hundred and thirty-three trips during an hour.
Excuse me, you said AMP?
AM peak, sorry. So call seventh peak, peak hour.
Okay.
So between seven and eight AM.
Oh, okay.
And so sometimes those times are varied. Um, so that's twenty-seven people going home and a hundred and seven people going to work.
That's just in this development, though, and it doesn't include the addition potentially of Village Two, correct?
Correct. And they'll access, they'll access the highway at different, uh, locations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some will be to two thirty-four, some will be to one sixty, and some will be to Three Springs Boulevard. Um, but those numbers equate to two, two point two cars per minute. Which, when you put them into kind of an understandable amount of time, the volume seem lower. And so that's why I tried to do that. The PM peak would be, four to five PM would be three cars per minute.
Okay.
So I don't like to say this, but that's not a lot of units. I know people are going to say it is a lot more, and it is more than there is now. But in terms of the city, that is not very many.
But I'm concerned for long-term planning for the city, on top of a- additional growth out of Village Two. I mean, we're talking about tripling that, if not more than that, on top of your average daily unit. So let's call it eight per minute.
I, I think it's going to be more than eight. It's going to be much more than eight per minute, but yes.
The, I guess, okay, seems a little bit concerned, I don't know, I just, we haven't.
Um, understand your point. I think the, the. Understand your point. I think the roads have been designed, there's been traffic studies. C dots finishing an interchange with a roundabout where.
Got it. Understood. Thank you. All right. I think we've exhausted our time for questions. So may we have, oh my God, a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodruff?
I'm so glad. You know, we have a motion on the table, right? Which is to approve, just, I'm just, because it's been a long time since we had the motion on the table. And that motion is to approve the future land map amendment, correct?
Right.
Just wanted to review that, what we're approving right now.
For the land map rezoning to residential, yes. Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
I'm sorry. I'm going to go ahead and say yes. Motion carries.
Mayor, can I make a motion to have any anti-Semitic comments removed from the recording of the meeting that you ruled out of order as the chair?
Yes, I would second that motion. Council discussion. Roll call, please. Oh, did you have a discussion?
I have discussion. I'm real opposed to colorful language like that. And normally I would agree to removing that language. But I think we got to make a record of what happens at these public forums sometimes and how they get out of control. It was real offensive to me to hear, hear that stuff. And, you know, it's offensive to me when even some of our local people here, who've made, you know, who say stuff like, the people we want in our community, you know, when they testify, that kind of language to me, it's like, oh my God, should I duck? You know?
Can I make a point of order?
So.
I can make.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, I can interrupt.
But, so I would, I would say, it's offensive, but I would leave it in the record, maybe with a footnote.
Other council discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to make a point of order. Normally the chair gives me the opportunity.
I was just letting you finish.
Well, I can interrupt because we're having a discussion. First of all, we're having a discussion about something that's sickening. And second of all, you know, in my opinion, I'm going to say opinion, but I'm sitting next to the city attorney. You don't make a motion on something that's not even part of the agenda. You can make it during the new business item and bring it up as discussion. And even on top of that, I think, if you want my opinion, I can't say it because it's not an agenda item, but it requires some process changes, so this doesn't happen again.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any other council comments? Roll call, please.
So give you some clarification from the city attorney, please.
I mean, look, city council meetings are fluid. Extraordinary circumstances sometimes allow for extraordinary motions to happen. Technically, bringing it up under new business would be more appropriate. But you had people in the audience who were offended by what happened. So I think bringing it up on the heels of this motion is certainly reasonable, given the circumstances, if a majority of you agree. But Counselor Bosman's point is very well taken, that is probably more properly brought up under new business. But again, the majority of the council and the chair would rule as to whether or not the motion is properly entertained immediately after the closure of this particular agenda item.
Thank you.
So if he hasn't, if he would like to call a vote to not take up the motion, you could vote on that. It's kind of up to the chair at this point.
I think we have a motion and a second on the table. So I'm asking for a roll call, please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Of course.
Hold on, we want to clarify what?
What do we, what's the motion?
It's a motion to strike any anti-Semitic comments from the recording, so they're not rebroadcast and available for the cowards that put them on the recording to listen to and show off to their friends.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Of course, I'll support that motion.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Abstain.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff? Yes.
All right, I'm going to move on to item number eleven. I'm not certain if all of the community wants to pay with us for this, so I'm going to just give a minute for people to, I said if they'd like to.
You've got a gold star tonight.
All right, we're going to keep going. Just trying to keep, keep, keep order here. Thank you. Bye, bye, Frank. Thanks. All right, we're moving on to item number eleven. Ben, may we have a reading of item number eleven point one, please? Can I have some order in the room, please? Item eleven point one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eleven point one is a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the Housing Fund in the 2024 Budget for a Community Development Block Grant.
Excellent. Staff presentation, Eva.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Eva Hinson, Housing Innovation Manager. Here this evening for the Community Development Block Grant Appropriation Resolution. The purpose tonight is to consider a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the Housing Fund in the 2024 Budget for the Community Development Block Grant. This initiative applies to the affordability and economic opportunity objectives in the Strategic and Operating Plan. A little overview for the Community Development Block Grant. The grant requires that local governments are the only entities eligible to apply. The grant does not require a local match and no physical impact to the city. Grant terms are effective through June thirtieth, 2026. And the city has administered the CDBG block grant as a physical agent for Homes Fund since twenty twenty, or sorry, 2012 to current. The CDBG grant overview, the city received one million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars passed through revenue funds that will assist the Homes Fund to provide primarily their mortgage assistance loans to families making less than eighty percent area meeting income, known as AMI, in La Plata County and the surrounding areas. And for an example, for council, in the 2023 income limits, we were discussing that previously this evening, is eighty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars earning for a four-person household. A little bit of a timeline for council. This came before you in November fifteenth of 2022 to approve a resolution to sponsor the CDBG grant application on behalf of Homes Fund. Previously in 2023, the city received a notice of award from the Department of Local Affairs for this particular grant. And at the end of 2023, the City of Durango received the grant agreement. And we're here before you tonight to do the resolution to authorize those revenue funds to the Housing Fund. And with that, I'll leave a motion before you tonight.
Thank you, Eva. Do I have a motion from council?
I move to approve Resolution R 2024. Is there a number?
This one will be number ten.
I move to approve Resolution R 2024 dash ten, authorizing an additional appropriation to the Housing Fund in the 2024 Budget for Community Development Block Grant.
Second. We already have public comment for this item. Under item number seven, we'll move on to council discussion. Counselors? Go ahead. Oh, no, no comment. I just, no comment from anyone? Okay, I will think this is just a great, amazing opportunity to continue this program, increase the pool of applicants that can qualify for mortgages, to continue to bridge the affordability gap, and to allow more opportunity for residents to build financial, you know, to build wealth accumulation, financial security and stability. So it's just some of the thoughts that I had. It's been a great program going forward. I'd love to see how well it has worked in our community and how much increase we've had in usage for this program. With that, may we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff? Yes. Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Moving on to item number twelve, may we have a reading of twelve point one, please?
Yes, item twelve point one is a public hearing to consider an ordinance for the twenty-nine-hundred block of West Second Avenue right-of-way abandonment request.
Evening, Mallory St. Pierre Planner with Community Development. So this is the twenty-nine-hundred block of West Second Ave, right-of-way abandonment request. This is a request from all property owners on the block that the city abandoned twenty feet of right-of-way along the east side of the twenty-nine-hundred block of West Second Ave. The parcels were annexed in nineteen forty-eight, and there's currently eighty feet of right-of-way width. By code, local streets require sixty feet of right-of-way width. The excess along this particular block, along the north and south ends of this particular block were abandoned previously in two thousand and four, nineteen sixty. And this right-of-way has historically been used by the property owners as front yard space for things like fences and landscaping, noting that if this is approved, that right-of-way then becomes private property. And so the property owners will be responsible for their own maintenance. This is showing the block, so the relevant properties are highlighted in red. Those are the current property lines. The blue shows the new front property line, should that twenty feet be abandoned. And this noting on this, it is similar to the block to the south. And then if we were able to zoom out, other blocks in the area. So the Land Use and Development Code has four criteria used in the evaluation of requests for abandonment or right-of-way. This requested abandonment is not in conflict with adopted plans or policies. As noted previously on the map, it's consistent with other blocks in the area. It's kind of a cleanup item. So this abandonment would not landblock any parcels, nor would it alter or restrict access to them. And then lastly, it will not result in any adverse impacts to the general community. That sixty feet of required right-of-way width will be retained along with sidewalks within that. And then utilities are mostly in the alley. But as engineering also required, the abandoned right-of-way will be retained as a utility easement, should it be needed. So staff finds that their proposal meets all applicable criteria. DFPD had no concerns, as well as the utility companies, again noting that most of the utilities are in the alley. No public comments regarding this request have been received. The Planning Commission heard this request during their December fourth regular meeting, and unanimously recommended approval. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance for the twenty-nine-hundred block of West Second Avenue right-of-way abandonment with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment? I don't know about any virtually. Oh, we do. Okay, we're going to carefully open virtual public comment. I'm ready with my gavel.
All right, Mayor, first we. Good evening. The city is muted. I just have a small question before I continue. Is this open general public comment, or is this specifically tied to the agenda item? I have got.
Specifically tied to the agenda item.
Oh, okay, then I'm going to pass. I'm going to wait for the open public comment. I don't have anything on this specific agenda item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No more? Okay, no more. I will close the public hearing. Council discussion.
I have one question. I was curious if we add twenty feet of property to those residential areas, would any of those properties be eligible to put accessory dwelling units on them then? Like, what is the size of the current lot and what would be the final size lot if we give the additional twenty feet to each lot?
I would have to double-check. I think they already need the minimum for, so it would be applicable in the case of a detached.
Okay.
Any other council comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff? Yes. Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Moving on to item number twelve point two, may we have a reading of twelve point two, please, Ben?
Thank you. Item twelve point two is a public hearing to consider an ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding detached condominiums and updated flood insurance study.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. As stated, this is an ordinance to amend portions of Chapter twenty-seven of the Durango Municipal Code, also known as the Land Use and Development Code. My name is Lily Oswald. I'm the Code Reform Administrator with the Community Development Department, which is why you'll be seeing much more of me. This specific ordinance is more administrative in nature than the last set of text amendments you all received in late 2023, so much less comprehensive and complex than that ordinance. And that's important to note, moving through these text amendments. These ones are regarding the updated flood insurance rate maps, or FRS, and flood insurance study, or FIS. FEMA has a lot of acronyms, so I'll try to steer away from those tonight. Again, this is the first reading of an ordinance which proposes text amendments related to adopting an updated insurance rate study map and insurance study effective date specifically within the Land Use and Development Code, and include a detached condominium process and section within our code. These initiatives apply to the affordability and economic opportunity and the environmental sustainability and resilience objectives in the Strategic and Operating Plan. The first topic for discussion tonight relates to Redline, item number one in the corresponding Redline of the drafted ordinance in your packet. And this is in regards to the insurance rate maps and study. FEMA issued a letter of final determination to our mayor and city adopting an updated flood insurance study and rate map for La Plata County and incorporated areas as part of the statewide update initiative. And this effort has been about two-plus years in the going, so we're excited to finally be at the stage of the process. And to remain a participating jurisdiction, the city must adopt and codify these updated rate maps and study, specifically changing the effective date from our current adopted date from 2010 to reflect the updated date of April twenty-fifth, 2024. The second set of changes for text amendments you will see in your packet relates to detached condominiums. Many communities are incorporating this type of condominium ownership, which is termed detached condominiums, which allows for an additional common ownership community subdivision type. Our current code does not include this or allow for this type of housing or subdivision option. It's important to note that by incorporating this model into our code, we will allow for an additional subdivision provision without deleting or negatively affecting any other subdivision or development regulations. A way we looked at it was you're adding a tool to the toolbox, the toolbox being subdivision types allowed within the City of Durango, without taking any other tools out or displacing any of those tools. The affected sections for detached condominiums within this set of text amendments relates to the classification of subdivisions, so adding detached condominium subdivisions to this section, adding specifications for detached condos to the preliminary plan section, and then also adding specs for detached condominiums, units, and those technical requirements on final plats to our final plat section, and then adding definitions for single-family condominium, detached condominium unit, and modular homes to facilitate with this subdivision type. On December fourth, 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommendation for these. On December 4th, 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommendation for these text amendments. On January 2nd, your council considered and approved the request for the public hearing and introduction of the ordinance for tonight's meeting. Tonight, you're considering, again during the first reading and public hearing, this ordinance of text amendments. It is slated to go in front of you again on February 6th for a final reading, and then would, if adopted, go into effect later in February of 2024. The review criteria for text amendments are outlined within the Land Use and Development Code in Section 6313-3. Staff finds that the proposed amendments meet all of these applicable criteria. No advanced public comment has been received for these text amendments, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of these text amendments at their meeting on December 4th, 2023. And with that, there is a recommended motion provided on this slide, which would open your public hearing.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance to update Chapter 27 of the City of Durango Municipal Code with the finding that the proposal complies with the criteria for text amendments as described in the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
I will now open the public hearing. Do we want to hear from our city attorney about public hearing comments and hate speech? Yes. Great, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing, do we have any public comment? Not seeing any?
Yes, Mayor, we have people online who would like to speak. The first is Mohammed Zandi.
Hello, hello?
Are we trying to add William?
He should be on this.
I think I'm here. I'm here to talk about love tonight. Is that okay?
Okay. Tom, have they left? No comments, okay. I'll close the public hearing, council discussion.
I have a couple of questions. Oh, sorry, thanks for the short presentation. Can you explain where the condominium changes came from, what triggered that new addition to our Land Use and Development Code?
Sure, I can shed a little bit of light on that, so as I briefly mentioned, and I did try to run through that quickly, but hopefully without shying away from any details. There are a lot of different communities in Colorado that are adopting this type of common ownership subdivision. Some of them that we looked at, many of them are on the Front Range, we also looked at Cortez, Leadville, Denver, Lakewood are a few. And this is an option to all real property owners, again within that toolbox. But this did come, the impetus from a land use type and a subdivision that we got within our Housing Division, so it would be of immediate benefit and impact, although it is not specifically slated just for one type of project, it's an option that will be presented moving forward for all property owners.
Has there been any interest in this type of development in our city?
Yes.
Okay, and then when I look at the definition, it says the single-family detached condominium dwelling unit is a detached building containing only one dwelling unit located within a a community with at least three or more detached single-family condominiums. And then later, it gives you a definition as modular home means a dwelling unit fabricated in an off-site manufacturing facility. So, am I? Can I anticipate that this Land Use and Development Code creates an opportunity or an impact, or however it ends up, of a property owner in the right zoning to just have four modular, did I say modular, modular homes placed on that lot, and then basically have a fourplex, but labeled as condominiums?
It would be probably in a myriad of different ways, so again, these two definitions are added as the slate of tonight's text amendments, but that does not mean that single-family detached condominium dwelling units must be modular units by any means. If someone had a large property with stick built, or you know, things like that, on the property, not just new coming in modular units, they could participate in the subdivision option if it, if they met all of these different regulations and codes moving forward. We do not currently have a definition for modular home, and moving forward, it's important to distinguish that modular homes are different than manufactured homes in terms of standards and codes and regulations that they need to meet, so that is a definition we've been wanting to add. And modular homes also have a different opportunity to apply for, and one of the biggest differences is they can receive traditional financing, and that they are on a permanent foundation versus manufactured homes may or may not be. So modular homes, if they met all of the different requirements from preliminary and final, and there was a lot large enough to support that, and they went through the subdivision and regulations for that type of detached condominium subdivision, if this was approved, then they would be going through that channel.
And my last question is, you say if it's approved in that area, but it says it is not allowed on EN 1 through EN 6, RA and RL, remind me which areas would be left? Where, where, where in Durango would we be able to see these units, what, what areas would classify as allowed?
Great question, without seeing a zoning map in front of me, I can't give you the exact zoning districts. Maybe you have an idea? Would that be higher residential?
Good evening, Mark Williams, Community Development Department, so to answer your question, Counselor Bossmans, it would still be allowed in commercial areas, planned developments, possibly the highest density residential areas, but we wanted to draft something that was consistent with density in existing established neighborhoods, so the EN neighborhoods are still intended for lower densities, that's why these would not be, they're currently prohibited in these neighborhoods, condominiums are, and so they would not be allowed either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for that answer, I was curious about the the flood, adopting the new flood insurance and FEMA regulations, and I wanted to know if, if adopting those new flood insurance FEMA plans are gonna impact the ability to get flood insurance? Or is it gonna make it easier to get flood insurance for the homeowners?
It wouldn't change the ease or ability for owners to receive flood insurance. It would make it impossible for anyone within the city of Durango to receive flood insurance were we to miss this deadline of April 25th, because then we would no longer be participating jurisdictions for that insurance area. But all the other regulations within our flood plains and flood zones, all of our definitions within a pretty cumbersome section of code remain the same. The only one up for coordination and consideration tonight is just changing that effective date from 2010, which is what we currently have, to reflect the April 25th, 2024 updated FEMA date.
Okay, so we're just changing the date, we're not changing the plat or the the specifics around which areas are in the flood zone and which areas aren't?
Yeah, so a good piece of question, so like I mentioned, this process for updating all of these flood insurance rate maps and areas have been a multi-year process coordinated through FEMA, and then also the Colorado Water Conservation Board. And throughout that process, it's been a very heavily noticed, and through updated data and different collection methods, they've been able to use LiDAR and get more comprehensive and maps that better reflect our floodways and flood provisions today. So all of those changes in the maps, whether flood zones decreased or increased or went away or changed in differentiation there, all of those would have been noticed directly to all of those affected property owners. And then, I believe that was in December of 2022, and then there's a 90-day appeal period, and within that process, those property owners can appeal if they feel that that determination for those changes is incorrect. And then within that process, Colorado Water Conservation Board and FEMA takes us into consideration within the appeals period and works directly with those property owners. So those specific case-by-case appeals may or may not have already been worked out with FEMA. However, the actual area which Durango participates allows for all properties affected or not affected directly within a flood zone to receive insurance for flood regulation. Does that kind of answer your question, though it does, those maps do change, and they are made effective by this changed date in the text.
Thank you.
Other council questions? May we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bossmans?
No.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, moving on to public comment on non-agenda-related items. What's that? Oh, sure.
I are considering tonight's events, I will direct the council to the email I send out in November, and then give you any additional explanation that you need, but public comment on non-agenda items is permissible, it is permissible to require that a topic be stated by each of the speakers prior to them be given, prior to them being given the floor. In addition to that, hate speech can and should be stopped immediately because the city council meeting is a limited public forum. It's a forum for the city's connected business meeting, which is very different than a street corner or a completely open public forum. There is no constitutional requirement to host general public comment at a city council meeting. Your decision to allow public comment on non-agenda items is an opportunity for citizens to engage the city on city-specific items, not general public speech. Hate speech is also properly stopped under public comment on non-agenda items because it disrupts the business of the city.
Thank you. So I will request that the topic be discussed before.
Do you recognize and ask them for the topic? If it's not related to city business, you are within your rights and it is not a violation of the First Amendment to restrict that speech or not allow it.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to, we do have some people who have identified a topic they'd like to comment on. We will limit discussion to three minutes, please let us know if you're a resident of the city, direct your comments to council, and we will not respond from the dais. We'll start with Sweetie Marbury, who would like to speak to us about Lake Nighthorse.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and yes, I am a resident of Durango. I'm requesting an update on when the Nighthorse pipe will be executed. Drought, more projects coming in the pipeline, and also other projects requesting water, as we saw tonight, will require planning and execution, and that all takes years to accomplish. During the 416 fire, the mayor had to request more water to be taken from the Animus River, because there was not enough water in the reservoir tank. It scared me, and it should scare you. Last year, Ms. Baker's presentation nailed it. The city is not prepared for long-term drought. I'm urging the city council to get more prepared, move forward with the execution of getting water out of Nighthorse to protect the city. Just because you have water rights does not mean there will be water available. I've lived that, and I'm urging you to, to be prepared for the next perfect storm. Drought, more growth, and fire will happen again. Maybe not on your watch, but it will happen again. All the literature points to reduced stream flows. I've come to city council for the last four years, before many of you sat there asking for water to be taken, have that pipe out of Nighthorse. It was always in the plan when I was on city council, and then it came to a screeching halt. It's critical to move forward, in my opinion, as a city resident and a former mayor, to prevent the next perfect storm, and you can only do that if we have access to Lake Nighthorse. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hendrick.
Mary Hendrick, I am a City of Durango resident, I live in Three Springs, before that, I lived on North College Drive, and I'm loving Three Springs. I'm here to talk tonight about use of recreational use at Lake Nighthorse, and first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk, and thanks for staying so late, and I promise not to talk naughty. I am here representing a group of at least 20 people that I have on an email, and another group, who I think will be speaking here in a bit, of non-motorized users at Lake Nighthorse. We have been involved since the very beginning with the talks about how recreation would be handled at Lake Nighthorse. And what I'm asking for tonight is a a vote from you to have an agenda item put on the city council agenda in the future, because we're kind of at a time crunch here. I was at the city Parks and Recreation today, they plan usually to put out their brochure about use, uses at Lake Nighthorse at the end of January. However, there's no Parks Director that we can speak to right now. There does not appear to be a Parks Board that we can go to, so we're coming to you to ask for an agenda item dealing with non-motorized use at Lake Nighthorse. And right since 2018, the use has been restricted to 10:00 AM in the morning for non-motorized use, or, I'm sorry, non-wake use. Motorized can be there seven days a week, anytime the lake is open. But non-motorized users are restricted to the non-wake times, and that is until 10:00 AM on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The park opens later in the spring and in the fall, which reduces the time sometimes to two hours a day and one hour a day. We would like to have, to have you look at the usage data, which has shown over the years that over 90% of the users have been non-motorized, and yet we get such a few hours to use the lake, where there's not boats tearing around, creating waves, creating noise, creating havoc, basically, and lots of waves and erosion on the shores. I do have some diagrams that I got from the city council showing those data usage up until 2021, and they don't have the 2023 data available yet, and that may not be out before they already put out their brochures. So my request tonight to you is, could we please get on the city council agenda to have our concerns be heard, because we don't feel like there hasn't been anywhere that anyone has listened to these concerns right from the beginning? Any questions, please, and this is my husband, Ed Hendrick, and he lives in Durango, too.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Jim Cross?
Good evening, my name is Jim Cross, I'm a 35-year resident of Durango West, but not a resident of the city. What she said, basically, okay? I would add that when Lake Nighthorse opened, we had all day, Monday and Wednesday, four hours for no wake. And this is not just a wake issue, but a noise issue as well. We were then reduced from that first year to what Mary said, till 10:00 AM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that's a pretty drastic reduction in terms of hours. And as she mentioned, some of those days are one hour or two hours, depending on whether the lake opens at 7:00, 8:00, or 9:00. We just would love to be able to be heard, we have been to prior Parks and Rec Directors with Uh, we just would love to be able to be heard. We have been to prior parks and rec directors with. No help at all, quite honestly. Um, and the rush is that they print their brochures. And of course, once they print the brochures, they say, well, we can't change it now. So we would like to be able to do this with the new Parks and Rec Director. She is not here yet. I'm told she's not here till March one, so we would love to have some time on your agenda, and we hope we can do that. Thank you.
Oops, thank you. All right, I will take virtual comments. Um, it looks like we have one.
Yes, Mayor Julie Cooley, and she may speak.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for your perseverance this evening. I am Julie Cooley. I am a Durango resident. And my topic tonight has to do with um, the care of our unhoused community members. We've been fortunate that with the recent frigid temperatures, we've not lost any of our unhoused neighbors. I don't want us to act after a tragedy, and I'm asking the council to consider. The possibility of a weather-activated emergency shelter. This type of shelter is, as the title indicates, and for an emergency situation. The criteria is generally based on temperature and is active only when the criteria is met. For instance, in Denver, the criteria is temperatures below thirty-two degrees, and there is moisture or below twenty degrees with no moisture. I realize the council has contributed to our existing shelters, and although the shelters may have openings. There are restrictions on who can be admitted, and this does eliminate quite a number of our our neighbors in need. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have anyone else. Virtual comments? So we will move on to item number fourteen, introduction of ordinances. Um, may we have a reading of fourteen point one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item fourteen point one is a request for public hearing to consider approval of the Elk Grove Preliminary Plan at four fifty-five. And five eighty-nine High Lama Lane, and to introduce the annexation ordinance.
Do I have a motion from council?
Um, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing to consider approval of the Elk Grove Preliminary Plan at four fifty-five. And five eighty-nine High Lama Lane, and an introduction of the annexation ordinance, February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, council discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Moving on to item number fifteen, other new business. May we have a reading of eight, fifteen point one, please?
Yes, Mayor, and that's item fifteen point one, assignment of two counselors to the interview team for the Community Development Commission.
Thank you, Ben. Um, uh, these two counselors will be joined by a member of the Community Development Department to form a three-person committee to interview qualified candidates. For the board and provide their recommendations to all of council at the February sixth regular city council meeting. I would like to make a motion to approve Counselor Yazi and Counselor Woodruff to the Community Development Commission. Do I have a second?
A second.
Council discussion.
I uh, I think I remember this was a topic we had on the last time when we reviewed uh, planning commission or board, board of commission members. Um, if, obviously, this was, seems to be discussed before by some people, but the. How does a counselor have an input on the selection of a board or commission member? If the process that took place beforehand on the other boards and commissions is being followed? Meaning two counselors basically decide without any feedback from other counselors what the board members will be. So I have a concern with that process. And I, and you're feel free, as you want, to completely ignore what I say and just go for the vote. It's okay.
Other counselor comments? I just thought that this is a great opportunity for Counselor Yazi and Counselor Woodruff to take this on, as they are the ones that will be working with these candidates the longest over time. Um, so that was my thought on that, but may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
I'm sorry, I have to put the speaker on. I was saying, nothing personal. I actually do support you both, but I will vote no against it because the process is not correct, in my opinion.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes. Motion carries. Other new business from counselors?
I'm, I'm just gonna bring up one. Um, we have a city council meeting on March nineteenth, which is during nine-hour spring break. Um, I can ask for an excuse absent. It's not a big deal, but I just didn't know if other counselors with school-aged children and staff, if there was any other conflicts. And if we wanted to move the meeting to the week before on March twelfth.
I would, I would like that, yeah. I might, I'm probably gonna be out of town also.
So I think we need a motion, right?
You would need a motion to amend the adopted calendar to move that meeting from the whatever date to the twelfth?
I'll make a motion to amend the adopted calendar to move the March nineteenth meeting to March twelfth.
Second.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Any other new business from council? I actually have a, go, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would like to suggest two study sessions. Um, in the future, and one would be considering the the wake issue at Lake Night Horse. Um, I'm not up on all the dates and times and non-motorized vehicles versus motorized, motorized vehicles. So that might be a good study issue, because I know that we work in conjunction with the other agencies, so.
Could we, could I suggest an update, maybe because, or maybe a little background, especially for the new counselors? Because we, I know when we first, when I first got elected, we had, there was like huge meetings, like there was a huge community meetings that were run about it. And a lot of public input and just like what it was when we opened, just like information, and then we can decide if we want to go forward with.
Right.
Did that work?
Informational system.
Information?
Yeah, but I would suggest we do it in a council meeting, um, a council update in the meeting, and I'd like to, um, I would, I would second that. Um, desire to get a council update on that. I'd like to see updated data usage. Um, and um, because I think that the numbers that we're looking at in the form that they share was just through twenty twenty. Um, so I'd love to see some current data usage. I know that there's been extensive and significant increases in the uses for Lake Night Horse. I'd love to be able to review um, that data and. Consider talking about potentially amending the schedule if there's council support to do that, but I'd like to do it in a council meeting. If there's council support for that. So I think we need a motion to have this on an agenda for the future.
Um, I'll make a motion to get an informational update on Lake Night Horse, non-wake times. Through history and then usage to see if we want to do anything further.
Perfect. Great. I'll second that. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosmans?
Yes. Just as a informational item, I did talk with Kelly Schmidt today, our Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, she will be starting remotely, January twenty ninth.
Oh, great.
Uh, as she begins her transition and will be here in person, February twenty eighth. Uh, so we'll be on, we'll be on and uh, uh, beginning going through that as she transitions. She has two younger children that she's transitioning from school, so needs a little bit extra time to kind of get that part settled through. Uh, but we can definitely do an informational presentation that kind of talks about the history of this. Uh, the, I guess, interesting part is she did just message me also today that she had some citizens reach out, because one of the issues was on this uh, this usage uh, already. So uh, that's already kind of gone through her, so we will uh, provide a a history and data usage as the council requests at a council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I have one more issue.
Excellent.
Um, you know, since we're talking about Lake Night Horse, if we could get an update on the pipe that we were discussing in the fall coming out of the dam. I know that we brought it up at one of our quarterly meetings with um, the tribe, but then it hasn't been brought up again. So just like an update from the um, the staff, that would be excellent.
I would agree with that. So motion for an update, Lake Night Horse update for a future agenda item. Um, and I would um, just add to that, if possible, just uh, where we are with timeline. I would second that motion. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Any other from council? Um, I would like to see if there's council support to um, allow the city to review all events taking place within our city limits. And consider directing the city attorney to request uh, or directing the city attorney to draft an amendment to section. I believe it's eighteen point three two of our code to require city permits for events at public facilities within city limits.
I'll second.
These questions, questions where I'm going with this?
I can fill in a little if you want. So I, I don't know if there's a solution or not, but the, the county um, owns facilities within the city. And they have issued permits for events without consulting the city. And there's nothing that are in our code that precludes that because of the way our, our special permit section is worded. Um, there may be a possibility, once I'm directed, to, to look at and study it, to require um, events from both the city and the county. If we change that language to say, within the city limits. So um, that way, we could properly prepare with the police department and the streets department and whatever else is needed for these major events that are hosted at some of the county facilities inside city limits. Again, it would be a process to develop that language, but it's a problem that's been pointed out to me several times by different people on the staff.
Excellent. Any other council discussion? Roll call. Oh, go ahead.
I, I think that's a great suggestion, but I would like to add how much extra staff time and licensing time that would be for the city clerk and so forth added to that. Um, study session or where we're gonna start.
Or a city council meeting.
A council meeting.
Yeah, I mean, i- i- if you direct me to develop something, I'll get with Jose, and at the time, it would come before you. Um, it'd have to come through introduction and first reading and second reading um, to make that change to the code. So there'd be plenty of opportunities for us to um, give you guys a presentation on how much staff time it would, it would require. So that would be included in the package I'm thinking about presenting for you guys.
Excellent. Council roll call, please, or roll call, please.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Any other requests for new business? All right, requests for excused absences.
Don't know if I, is it a right, all regular meetings or is it all council meetings, special meetings? I think for you, it's safest for all meetings. Got you. Uh, so Mayor and council, as you know, uh, I have a, uh, my son has a medical appointment in Denver next week. Uh, so I will request that I have an excused absence for the joint meeting with the county.
Joint meeting with the county?
Which is uh, Tuesday. Yes, I'll be missing that one.
Tuesday, uh, okay. Thank you for that request. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on that, because I didn't realize there was that meeting as well. I will not be able to attend that meeting as well, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, and then looking around. Okay, here we go.
No.
Excellent. Um, wonderful. Do we need uh, to approve that? Can we, can we have a motion to excuse uh, the city manager from the meeting next week with the, it's this, with the county? Joint county meeting.
So, so moved.
And a second?
You can do yourself too, at the same time in one motion.
Right, I just, yeah, I thought I was, but that's okay. She moved it as well, so I'll second it. Um, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
I hope this is the easiest one. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Yay.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.